Meeting of. Let me start again. Good evening. This is a meeting of the Amherst Town Council Finance Committee Meeting. Councillors have been, other councillors have been invited to attend as a committee of the whole. It is a special meeting of the Finance Committee meeting. And Andy Steinberg, who is Chair of the Finance Committee, will be chairing that. So, based on Governor's Baker's orders, we are allowed to hold this meeting virtually. I am going to call on each of the councillors and ask if they can hear us and we can hear them. And then Andy is going to call on the other people who are on the Finance Committee that are not. And do the same thing. So I will begin with Alyssa Brewer.
Present.
Thank you. Pat De Angelis.
Present.
Darcy Dumont.
Here.
Mandy Jo Hanke.
Present.
George Ryan.
Present.
Evan Ross.
Present.
Steve Schreiber.
I'm here.
Kathy Shane.
Here.
Andy Steinberg. Dorothy Pam.
Here.
Charlie Balmill.
Present.
Did I miss any councillors?
Me, Sarah Schwartz, President.
I'm sorry, Sarah Schwartz, President. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to recognize that there's a quorum of the Finance Committee just who've already registered their presence previously. And want to call the Finance Committee to order, but there are some members of the Finance Committee who are not councillors and so I need to confirm that they can hear and be heard. Bernie Kubik.
Unmuted.
You're unmuted.
If I'm new to. Bernie.
Present.
Bob Hegner.
Present.
And it's Jane Schaeffler here.
I'm here.
Okay, so I think we have all members of Finance Committee have now checked in and confirmed that they can participate in the meeting. This is, as Lynn noted, this is a meeting of the Finance Committee. It's a meeting to review the Social Services Section of the Budget. It is found on pages 186 through 189 of the proposed budget and is a part of the Community Services Function. Section 5.5A of the Charter requires the Finance Committee to, and I quote, thoroughly review the budget and make a presentation and recommendation to the full town council within 30 days of referral, unquote. Because it was pos, as noted, we now have a quorum of both committees. The council and the full, and the committee, the budget submitted to the council on May 3rd proposes the appropriation of $130,000 for fiscal year 22 as Personnel Services for two community responder positions. I will begin the meeting by asking the town manager to explain that recommendation. I will then ask members of the Finance Committee and councillors who are not members of the Finance Committee if they have any questions. Members of the Community Services Working Group are joining in to the meeting. I don't know, are they on this call now? Athena?
They're in the audience.
Okay, we, when, when, I will have to ask that if they need the opportunity to call a meeting to order once they join this meeting because it would be in, then a public meeting. And I will also, there will be an opportunity for the for a limited public commentary meeting, when the Community Services Working Group here is here, I understand that they may have something additional to present, but I have asked that they not repeat the Monday presentation since all of present have had the opportunity to see the Monday presentation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Paul. And since he's made the budget proposal, we want to start by hearing from him and as I say, then opening it up to councillors and members of the Finance Committee to ask questions is the next step. Paul?
Great. Thank you, Andy, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this portion of the budget. I'm glad that you've carved out a separate day to do it because it's an important and significant proposal and I especially recognize that the Finance Committee has already had one three-hour meeting today and will try to be efficient in the presentation so we can get to questions and answers and comments after that. I want to note that I'm joined here by several members of our staff because this, there, there are a lot of people who are involved in helping to form this. First is our Police Chief Scott Livingstone, Captain Ron Young and Captain Gabe Ting. Our Dispatch Center Chief is Mike Curtin is here. Fire Chief Tim Nelson, our Director of Senior Services, Mary Beth Oga Lovitz. And then our Finance Team, Sonia Aldridge and Sean Mangano are all in the room. I think that's, I think that's everybody that's here that I recognize. Okay, so if you want to start the slide deck, Athena? So we're in a unique moment in history. We have the opportunity to listen to our community and actually for the community to speak and align the services we provide specifically public safety services and policing. I've been welcomed to sit with the Community Safety Working Group for the intense work that they have done. What has come out of their work has created a new dialogue within the community. The work they have done shaped this revised proposal and on a personal note changed how I think about my role and public policy in general. Next slide. Based on the report of the working group, I believe that we are united on the goal of reimagining public safety said every incident receives the right response at the right time. Currently, we have one tool for any issue that comes up, whether it's a kitten stuck in a tree or a person sleeping in a, in a bank vestibule or a person with a gun in the woods. That tool is a police officer with a cruiser. These police officers are well-trained with a broad range of skill sets, but it isn't always the best way to respond to a call. And I think both the members of the public have said that, the members of the Police Department have said that many people say that it's, it's a limited toolset. The proposal in concert with the recommendations of the working group and in line with dozens of other communities who are exploring the same area is to create a new department to be located in the Community Services Section of the Budget to offer unarmed community responders to designate the calls. If we get this right, this in turn will change the role and mission of our police officers. It's important to note that this is not the first time we have looked at this type of redefinition of policing. Since the 80s, the town has moved dispatch from uniformed officers to civilians. Established in a, a, an animal welfare officer has established civilian parking enforcement officers and most recently, if you recall, a year ago, we established the COVID ambassadors because we felt that it was important for non-uniformed officers to be responding to complaints about COVID and things like that. So there's always been a willingness and an eagerness to try to align our services with the need of the time. So next slide. So why is now the right time? So it's a rare occurrence for the town to establish an entirely new department. With this proposal, budget proposal, I'll be bringing a detailed proposal to the council to take this important step. This is the opportune time to take the significant step in our government. Last year, the town council adopted goals, important groundwork and vision has been laid out by the working group and community support has been offered. Town staff, most importantly, the Police Chief and his leadership team supports delivering services on key calls in a different way. The working groups report details many of the values that should be incorporated in this program. I don't, I won't document them here, but I highly recommend that the working groups that you read, the working group's thoughtful reports, if you haven't already, it really is a good piece of work. And also there are dozens of other communities who are engaging in the same kind of work that we are now. So there's, there's an opportunity for us to learn to look at best practices and to share our experiences with other communities as well. And then there are some other opportunities such as, you know, funding, we've, we've believed there'll be grant, we know there will be grant opportunities coming our way. And then we know that this conversation is happening not just in the town of Amherst, but also on campuses of Hampshire, Amherst Col, Hampshire and Amherst College and the University of Massachusetts. Next slide. So what I'm going to do tonight, and this is sort of the, the direction of the slide, is I want to talk about the Community Responder Program and talk about the elements of that and give you a timeline, update on the proposal, things like that. Talk about future fiscal years as well. I want to talk additionally about the other proposals, some of the other proposals that the Community Safety Working Group had identified in their report and then we'll open that up for questions. Next slide. So there are many considerations to take, to take into consideration. And we want to make sure that our plan that we develop is aligned with the resources that we have. We want it to be based on data analysis. We want to make sure that we will have adequate staffing when we put forth a community responder program and we want to have the appropriate staffing at the Police Department. And, and we want to make sure that before we launch a program, we have all the things set up so that it will be a success. The goal for all of us is that this be a successful program and that be sustainable over time. And that includes training, policies and procedures in a long-term implementation plan. The proof of concept is what is proposed. We, we want to show that it's will really work. Is the, is the new program effective at a moment of crisis? Are communication lines strong and redundant? Do all parties understand their roles and the others who may be responding? So our mission is to match our resources to our needs and right now I think there's a feeling that this is not the case. Craft, we want to craft a program that needs, meets the needs of the calls being handled, which is again, the right response at the right time. Next slide. So what I have included in this is the funding for, in the Community Services Budget. So we purposely and, and listening to the working group have, have taken this in a different section of the budget to have it, so we can have an acknowledgement of where it, that it's really is about a different way of responding to calls. The intention is to plan and pilot the program for implementation in FY22. And then in the process, establish baseline metrics that we can then measure and follow up on and see how the program is doing. Is it handling the right calls? Are we, are we transferring the calls, the right calls to the program and are they able to handle them? Does it need to be adjusted? We want to make sure that this program is recalibrated based on any kind of feedback we get from people who are making calls and, or people and how we respond to them. Also, we want to talk about the calls that aren't going into 911. We want to see if there's additional calls that might come directly to community responders and what that would look like because there is a sense that there are people who won't call 911 that maybe will call a community responder program for support. Next slide. So, so I'm not going to go into the details, but, and so this, this packet is in, in this slide deck is in your, in your packets. But I wanted to lay out a, basically a, with an 11-month plan for how we get from here to there with, with some items that would have to, that would happen month by month. So we would start in July, well, actually we'd probably start in June because I'll talk about that in a second. And we would, I would, we would pull together our management team, we'd pull together, we would request participation from members of the work, Community Safety Working Group if they are willing to do that. We would want to engage with other stakeholder groups who may benefit, will benefit from this program such as those people experiencing homelessness, substance abuse, mental health challenges, things like that. Will want to look at the data that, that we need to collect through the LEAP program, which I'll talk about in a second. And other social service providers who are already doing some of this work in a different way that the Police Department and Fire Department utilize currently. We want to talk to the Fire Department. I mean, Tim will be part of the program, but to understand they're on the front lines for many of these calls as well. And then we want to finalize that first month, the timeline. I went, that groups are really locked down the timeline so we have benchmarks and milestones that we'll hit. So in August, we'll talk about the kinds of calls that will need to go to the Community Responders Program. We will utilize the support of the LEAP program who has done this for many communities. And they have, they have an experience and sort of can make an informed judgment about what kinds of calls are good to be reprogrammed. We want to develop more of the program details. Are we doing employees' contracts for services? What's the role of the Fire Department? The Fire Department has paramedics on duty 24/7. Are there, are there ways that we can access additional firefighters to provide support for the program? You know, I think these things should all be on the table. And then in August also before, I want to make sure that we can have a meeting with the full Community Safety Working Group to review the progress to date and gather additional input. This is the group of people who've put as much time as anybody on this program to date. In September, we'd looking, be looking for job descriptions for the lead community responder. This would be a leadership position who will be the, the primary person charged with implementing the program. And we'd be doing job descriptions for all the community responders. We'd want to be developing our policies and procedures and, and September is when I would make the initial departmental proposal to the town council with all the backup that you would expect and I'd be looking to you for the kinds of information you will want for that to bake a successful presentation. Just as a, as a footnote, under the town charter to create a new department, the town council has to approve it. Next slide. So in October, we'd look at, we'd review the department. I assume that there'll be a process with the town council to review the departmental proposal. Typically, the town council refers it to one or more committees. So we would be reviewing that with the different committees that the council chooses to have it discussed. We'd be finalizing our policies and procedures. We would see, hope, we'd hope that the council would approve the new department in October. We'd be setting up the training programs that these responders would need and we would have recruited our lead community responder. And then in November, we have the person working, we start recruiting with that person taking the lead, we start recruiting our community responders. December, we finalize our training program, we get the, all the material in place such as a vehicle or vehicles. We have to have the community responder space where they're going to be located, identified and outfitted and all the little logistics and yet they, they, they seem small, but they take, each one might take time. In January, we, we declare this program, the pilot program operational and we'd start training. I think, you know, many of these programs require up to 50 hours or more of training for community responders. And so we want to have adequate and ample time for the responders because they will be taking on some difficult things. We make sure they have all the de-escalation techniques and all, everything that they need to make it be a successful responder. Next slide. So by February, we want to have everybody hired. We think we want to have the training being completed. We want to have the finalize all the protocols for call handling by the dispatchers. We went in March and we want to keep the training going and, and we want to, we will have to do training of all of our dispatchers. We have a number of dispatchers who work around the clock, so they all have to be trained and understand the processes. We will need to talk about alternative phone numbers, how we handle those, if there's a dedicated line for handling calls. There's some interest with the, the working group to have a line that would go straight to the responders. I think with our new phone system that is, has many more enhancements, that is more achievable with our current phone system. We have to understand, are these calls going to be recorded or not? How are they, how are we going to monitor things? If, if they need to be monitored, what are the legal ramifications of, of these types of things? And, you know, I think that depending on how we work through the dispatch and the phone call thing, we set up a, just as a side note, during COVID, we set up a separate call-in line, the COVID hotline that was staffed many hours, all, all day during the week and then on weekends as well by ambassadors so that there was a live person answering the call during the peak times when calls were coming in. And we found that to be a high-value thing because it was important for people to, when they, when they're calling in a crisis that they get a voice, they don't get a machine, someone says, I'll call you back. So staffing that up appropriately will be important task to figure out how to make that happen. In April, we'll be looking to present a report to the council on how the program is working because in May I'll be presenting a new budget for FY23 and I think they'll probably be talking about FY24 as well in, in order to keep the program up and running. Next slide, please. So I'm going to ask Sean to go through the budgetary pieces of this, if you don't mind, Sean?
Yeah, so the first piece here is the implementation team. This is the different department heads that would be involved in, in sort of that first phase of the tasks that were described. We didn't quantify what this would be, but obviously there's a, there's a value to this. The second piece are the community responders themselves. And so there's sort of a lead community responder, which is the, what we've labeled here as a director. And then there, we are proposing for actual community responders for the first year. And so the value of that, again, these are all estimates until we actually hire people and make decisions about where they would fall on a, on a salary grid and what, what salary grids they would fall on. But our estimate for that piece of it is 150,000 for FY22. And our proposed way we would fund this is 130 that was reallocated from the Police Department to the Social Services Department. And then we also identified in a, at a prior Finance Committee meeting that there was also about $40,000 in educational incentives that we felt we could repurpose as well. The next piece is an administrative support position. Again, so you can see there's different timeframes for, based on the calendar that we just discussed. And so this would be a seven-month position. We're estimating this would cost about 30,000. This would also come from the, the staffing and the educational incentives budget between 130 and the 40,000 we identified. It's about 170,000. So we're a little bit short of that target, but again, there's going to be a lot of wiggle. There's going to be a lot of change when we actually fill these positions. We're estimating the benefits associated with those positions will be around $45,000. We don't know who will, who won't elect health insurance. So this is just an estimate at this point. And then the last piece that we're proposing is to use about $250,000 from either the American Rescue Plan Act or other grants if we identify them. The, under the American Rescue Plan Act, the criteria that this would fall under would be the revenue replacement criteria. And so we're proposing that to be used for the consulting that would go on, the training, the purchase of a vehicle, supplies for year one supplies, because there'd be a greater amount of supplies needed to be purchased in the first year and outfitting the space. And so the total of all of these, these different pieces, about 475,000.
Excellent. Next slide. Thanks, Sean. So there's two things that we're doing now in May and June of this year. The first is we have had many discussions as has the members of the Community Safety Working Group with a group called the Law Enforcement Action Partnership. And they have become sort of specialists in developing community responder programs and other alternative policing efforts. I know the chief and his staff were on a call today with them talking about the calls that need to be analyzed and we would, we will seek to contract with them is, in this fiscal year to provide some of the data that we need such as truly analyzing the calls for service, understanding how we categorize calls and we will open, that's why Mike Curtin is here from the dispatch. He can help if there are any questions along that. We want them to help us with asset mapping and how other towns have done record-keeping, things like that. The other thing is that there is a, you know, I talked about how we have many communities all working in the same space at the same time, not, not everyone, but many of them. And we're all at different phases. So Harvard's Kennedy School of Government has reached out and they have a government performance lab. And we are applying this week to, to be a part of their Harvard, their community of practice where they will group communities based on where they are in the process. So we're sort of in the middle of the process. We are, we're not just thinking about it, we're actually doing it, but we're not at the Eugene or Albuquerque or Denver model where they're looking at the next phase. And so in fact, the call I was on had people from Eugene and Albuquerque and Houston, Texas and places like that because they're looking for their own community of practice supported by the Kennedy School because we're all, we can learn from each other and we have to create a program that's unique to our town because we are a unique town. We're a unique town partially because of university, but there are other university towns, but we're relatively small compared to a lot of the other communities that are building this. So that has to be taken into consideration, but they have other small communities that they, I'm hoping that they'll group us with. So they are, this is a no-cost thing. It's an application. We have to get, get approved and they will provide 12 months of support, technical assistance as we need it. And it really is, you know, learning about that this was available, sort of matched up so perfectly because we're in this spot and we want to be able to do this in a really smart way. So in this, in this program, if we get, if we get admitted to it, will begin in August of 2021. Next slide. So these are the types of things that we will, the Community Safety Working Group has a pretty, they've identified all these things that, I mean, quite honestly, have stole a lot of this out of their report because, you know, they've identified the issues that we need to be talking about. You know, some of the other things that might be in here is what data is public, what are the legal requirements, you know, if, are they mandatory reporters? If they come into a certain situation, there are a myriad of legal issues that we want to make sure that we don't put anybody that we hire into a bad situation legally or through safety, it's just physical safety either. Or, and so, and we also, as I mentioned early, we want to talk about what calls are not going to 911. And talk about the alternative phone systems that we might have to, we might look to implement as part of this program. So next slide. So this is, you know, where it becomes more difficult because I think year one, we never thought was going to be a challenge, but years two, three and beyond will be because we anticipate that the program will grow. We anticipate that, you know, right now we're funding it basically for half a year. We're going to automatically have to fund it for a full year, even if it doesn't add any new people. There's a, there's an impact on the budget, but we also anticipate that there will be a need for additional community responders and there's a cost to that. And this is probably the most important part of the work that we need to do. So I think that we are looking at adding significant funds and as everybody knows, under the, the limits of proposition two and a half, we're limited to increasing our budget, our property tax by two and a half percent plus any new growth that comes. So this will be a important factor to see how we can fund this program going forward. Next slide. So I want to list some of the challenges that are out there. So, and I think I, you know, there is the, the budget for FY22. There is a tremendous urgency for change that we need to address and that's why we have a fairly aggressive timeline. If you looked at Northampton, they're taking a year to plan. They're hiring a, they're taking a different approach. So there, we're trying to do the planning in about six or seven months. We need to have a detailed plan for implementing and piloting. I think the council will require a pretty comprehensive plan in order to approve a new department for the town. I talked about the, the budget challenges. You know, we want to really craft a program that matches the needs of the town. And we want to create, we want to recruit excellent community responders. I think some of the research that's been done by the working group was that it might not be the degree you have, it might be the attitude that you bring to the job. And we want to understand the labor market, talking to other social service agencies who might be hiring the same types of people. And so we can align our hiring requirements to match the needs of the program and the skills that are readily available with our candidates. And once we have this program up and running and it's successful, we want to ensure that the Police Department's mission and purpose are aligned with the staffing provided by the town. So if we have a new program in place, it means we need to be thinking about what is the Police Department's role as well going forward and the Fire Department, for that matter, might have impact on both of those things. And then the key is though, again, just from looking, talking to people is that making sure to recognize that we always think that Amherst is unique and in this situation we truly are and we need to put the time in to craft the program so it meets the needs of our community members. Our goal is to create a policing program and community safety response program that meets the needs of our community. Next slide. So I wanted to address some of the other items that were in the working group. So the, the working group took a broader look at the issues it was examining. It shot, it sought to ensure public safety. It shot, it sought to ensure public safety response is anti racist. Equitable, just and fair, but they did the next thing, too. They wanted to offer preventive services that get at the root of assisting residents to avoid public safety involvement in the first place. And I commend them for that, taking that extra step. And I want to address some of the things that they have talked about and because. It aligned with some of the things we've been thinking, some of them have aligned with some of the things we've been thinking about. So the first is, how is a town addressing diversity, equity and inclusion work, what many people call D E I? And you'll see that in this presentation, diversity, equity, inclusion. My son is. Works with difficult children and 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 they they call it Jedi, justice, equity, diversity and inclusion, because the kids get excited about being part of the Jedi team. So the budget proposal calls for the creation of a D E I coordinator, which is already in the in the budget as presented. And by reallocating an existing position and using our some ARPA funds to create a new position that will be a D E I coordinator. The 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 budget that you have in front of you also includes a separate eighty thousand dollar request for anti racism work that is included in the town manager's budget. This is that eighty thousand dollars that was in last year's budget that paid for the consulting group and some stipends for the working group and some other work by the. By the core equity team for the town of Amherst. In addition, I'm prepared to dedicate the funds allocated to the Economic Development Director position currently that's in the town manager's budget. And to reallocate those funds to a D E I director position. This is a difficult decision on my part. Because both are high needs. But I feel like at this moment in time where we are. This is a higher priority for the community and and prepare to reallocate those funds to this position. Next slide. So the proposal also addressed the need for a youth empowerment center. And, you know, this definitely merits exploration. We think it should be done in partnership with the schools. The schools already have a. Family Center that does some of the same things, but probably not everything. So I think we can, there are some lessons to be learned from the work that they did on their program, but also. Sort of gauge how this would look there. And so I would ask our new D E I director and our new recreation director to work on this this proposal for this for the next budget season. Next slide. And likewise, with the BIPOC Cultural Center, which they the working group articulated as a as a high value. We would be looking at this along the same lines as the as the previous options. Next slide. And then the the Community Safety Working Group is going to be working on the next phase of their charge, which is the Resident Oversight Board. And and I'm eager to hear and work with them on what that type, what that. Oversight board looks like. So I don't want to really opine on much of this. I can, I believe I can speak for the chief and he'll scream if I don't, but we both support the creation of a oversight board of some sort that. That gives a place for people to go if they have complaints that aren't being handled well by the police department. And we want to develop this, the charge for the oversight group and review that with the council as well. And, you know, there is, if there are funds needed to support this, this work, we'd be looking at that eighty thousand dollars that's set aside in the town manager's budget for some of this work. Excellent. So that's our presentation, my presentation. And so I look forward to questions and concerns you may have.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate the presentation and I'm going to be recognizing. Both counselors and resident members of Finance Committee in the order in which hands get raised. So please use the hand raise function and we'll start with. Melissa Brewer.
Thank you for that presentation, Paul, and I'm so excited that you were able to share those slides with us earlier today in between all the other meetings. And I'm also really excited to see the progress that we've made since the initial amount of money that was discussed for this and and just the way you've taken everything to heart and tried to figure out creative ways to approach it. So this is incredibly interesting and I really look forward to our deliberation. I have a small thing that I feel like is actually a framing issue that actually matters. And I don't want to detract from really meaty discussions, but I am really my gut instinct when you first brought this up. Is I love the fact that it's under Community Services because people complain about, you know, how much money do we actually spend on. Serving people in different ways. And so obviously, public safety is one of those ways, but the senior center, veterans, recreation pools, etc. I really dislike, dislike is not a strong enough word, calling this social services. Social services feels like a throwback to nineteen fifty's welfare programs for needy people as opposed to something that benefits our entire community. So I don't want to ask you to pay somebody for branding and I know you had to call it something. And I appreciate totally that it's within the Community Services umbrella. That makes so much sense to me. But let's have everybody put their heads together and come up with another name for it. Because I really feel like it calls this out as a separate thing when it's not. It's something that's literally for everyone. Far more so than the senior center is, for example, or Veteran Services is, which have much narrower populations. So I look forward to that, just so that we can make it clear that this is a very holistic approach that you're promoting. And that that's intended here. And sometimes those words do matter. So thank you.
I can answer that, Andy. So I think that's a really good point. I think we did that because and so you can weigh in here. We had a budget line item that was already established. Was that Sonya doing it? I mean, it was really, it was more like, do we create a new budget line item or do we just take what is already in existence? And so, so I think you're right, we can look at renaming that or.
Yeah, we can, we can rebrand that going forward to something else than social services. The only, the only thing we'll have to keep in mind is if there's other things we do in the future, then we may have to create a separate grouping, which is something we can do. So.
Yeah. It's just a chart of accounts thing.
So again, we're open, we're open for questions, Kathy.
I too want to thank you, Paul. You know. The distance between what we saw as one little piece of a budget to this larger view and. I I definitely think, thinking about this is a, next year will be a transitional period for us. I, as some people know, I've have a background or for years worked on healthcare policy. And we would come up with fabulous ideas and people would say, how do you plan on implementing them and can you get them up and running next week? And it would turn out, we actually couldn't get them up and running next week, you know, but we could get them up and running. It wasn't that they weren't doable. So I I just have a couple of questions about the. The coming year, but also as you started to look at the future years. I noticed that in our budget, we just got third quarter estimates in on the current year budget and it looks like. We will be running under budget in the police department, probably police line, at least in part because two positions weren't full. So can one dedicate that amount to the new program going forward? Can you do it in a way that it it becomes excess in this year goes into reserves but comes back out as part of funding for a new program? Because we can use reserves that way. So that's a question on that pot of money. Secondly, and I know Alyssa knows far more about this than I do. But then we just had a discussion in the meeting before about the Community Impact Fund, the Marijuana Community Impact Fund. And how restricted it is. It does say you can buy vehicles with it. It does say you can do mental health training with it. Again, it's around marijuana and it's more around drug, but at least some of these calls. So can any of that, and there may not be an answer to that, but can any of that be drawn on because it's a pot of money that we haven't touched on? So I'll stop with those two questions. I have a question about the current budget, too, but I just wanted to get those two in because I've been. Going back and forth with the budget, trying to think of how do we get the first year program running up up and running and and be ready to build on. In year two and build on rapidly, but get a healthy enough start so we can really. As you said, be saying, how well is it working? Can we get everything in order? So I was looking for potential sources of additional money as we need them.
Sean, do you want to help with that? Or do you, I'm happy to do it. I mean. Yeah, Sean, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, sure. So the first piece, I think, was can we use the the amount that the police department's coming in under budget this year for to support the program next year? Potentially, I mean, that's not an ongoing revenue source. Again, that that's sort of like using reserves to to fund something. But potentially, again, that's going to fall to free cash. And if there's a a use we decided in the future that we need to pay for out of reserves, that could be an option. Again, we're going to, we were proposing to look at the grant first before we dip into that. But again, it's it's an option for the for the council to decide. What was the second question, Kathy?
Marijuana money, marijuana.
Yeah, no, that's something we've talked about. Actually. We're trying to work on a, you know, we plan to come back to talk to the council about that money in the, I think it was going to be in the summer or the fall. We were going to have a more comprehensive discussion with the council about how to allocate that. You know, our our initial thoughts are that some of that money could go to support this program. It could also go to support other mental health programming in town and it can also, we also are thinking it could go to support some. Mental health programming at the schools or and some substance abuse education at the schools as well. So I think the answer is yes to that. And we wanted to have that conversation in the fall about the plan for using that money going forward.
So I just follow up on both. So if those pots become. Available to greater or lesser extent in what you laid out as a first, I understand this is just the FY twenty two. Does that potentially either expand to another responder position, expand to, and those decisions could be made in the spring? Because it's money that's being kind of held in a bucket to say we we could draw on that money. So that was where I was thinking on.
Yeah, yeah, the cannabis money is something that could be appropriated. Again, if we come in the fall and have that conversation and that's it's decided that we're going to go down the route of using it to add a. Another community responder, that's a decision that could be made in the in the spring because that money we haven't included in the budget at all yet.
And then the other pots, how long is the. The current, the new federal money that you're, you've got that two hundred and fifty thousand, that's that's expands over three years. So is that potentially a source for not Nick for but FY twenty three and twenty four?
Essentially, again, so, yeah, it goes till FY twenty four and it can even, depending on what you're doing, extend even a little bit beyond that. There's going to be a lot of needs for that money and this could be one of them. That money is meant for, if you read the eligible uses, it's meant for, you know, COVID response and and economic recovery and and a lot of other issues. But this could be one of them. The the eligible use that we are considering when we talk about using those funds for this program. Is one that's called revenue replacement and that use is capped and it's capped based on. A calculation that you you can show how much revenue you actually are down compared to where you were before COVID. And so you you do that calculation several times throughout the grant. So, you know, in this first year, we anticipate that number is going to be a potentially a larger number for revenue replacement because our revenues are down quite a bit from where they were pre pandemic. But as we go forward in the out years and as things start to recover, that number is going to shrink. So we don't know exactly how much will be available in year two or year three. For that eligible use, but that is, again, that's something we were considering as part of this plan.
Thank you.
Steve.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. And I was also very moved by the. Community Service Working Group, the Community Safety Working Group presentation on Monday. I didn't say much then. But I do have some questions here. Some of them are kind of nerdy questions. So Massachusetts is one of the most heavily regulated states regarding professions and occupations. So my question really has to do with what actually is regulated by, like, what are the things that somebody who's a sworn police officer actually. Have to do or a firefighter or an E M T. So since community responder. It seems like a relatively new kind of a job description in the Commonwealth. I'm just curious what those boundaries might be in terms of. Everything from licensing to union contracts to. You know, federal standards. So that's, that's not necessarily a question that has to be answered now.
Well, can we take a crack at it?
Yeah, actually, if I babble away while. Yeah, yeah. So. A friend of mine who's been a police chief in a number of communities turned me on to. Sunnyvale, California and Kalamazoo, Michigan, obviously different states which are. Communities which have cross training between the various community safety. Groups. So for example, police, fire, E M T. And maybe others, especially in Sunnydale are kind of, there's a unified approach where a police officer can go. Respond to a fire call as a firefighter and, you know, vice versa is how I understand them. So I'm just curious because creating another. Department causes inefficient sort of inefficiencies. I I'm really, I'm literally babbling here. And then the last thing I wanted to say is. Obviously, a new fire department is on the capital priority list, but I hope that we. As we're thinking about community safety, obviously, a new fire building is very much part of the community safety complex. But it's possible that as we're, as this department matures or whatever. matures that the fire department can be a reasonable. Co-located space for the community responders. So that's my Dublin and I'd love to hear what Paul was going to say for anyone else.
Yeah. So I just, so that, you know, the Tim, Tim Nelson, our fire chief has had. Some really creative ideas on how can we utilize the fire department to support this mission? And his team is very open to thinking about because they're all paramedics and they're on duty twenty four hours a day. What, what, you know, and so that that's an opportunity that we should address. In terms of all the legal stuff, I'd look to either Scott or Mary Beth, who Mary Beth is licensed social worker. Scott, of course, knows everything about policing. Do either or both of you want to address that?
If you want to go first, Mary Beth?
Sure. There we go. I guess I would, I would distinguish these positions as really more focused on behavioral health management. If you look at the models that are out there, they are typically individuals who expertise with mental health crisis, substance use. Poverty related issues, homelessness, food insecurity. So they tend to be more of an expertise with social work. Than individuals who are trained as law enforcement. And and in many of the contracts, including cahoots, it states specifically that the community responders are not law enforcement. Nor are they authorized to act thereof. So for instance, they couldn't, they couldn't enforce a trespass order. They wouldn't do something like that. They would not serve somebody with a trespass order. They might respond to a trespass call to deescalate their response and how they perform their work. Is very different and it's behaviorally based. And so that's, I I just think a sort of a primer of the distinction between those two facets. And what I also would know is that in all of the models that I have read and researched, and and I used to teach a course, Mental Health and the Law. So I've spent many years, it's it's a professional passion of mine. Is that the these models are highly successful when they are collaborative. And by collaborative, it is. Everybody understands what the roles and functions are and the boundaries and limits and and the specific expertise that each team brings. So an E M T brings a very specialized medical approach and and the team, as they begin to work together and call and cross train. You know, they learn when it is appropriate to maybe call in for assistance or to get backup. But they really are collaborative and that they tend to also have round tables. So once a month, you would have a defense attorneys meeting with. The fire department, the police department, community stakeholders, behavioral health providers, the community responders. And those individuals who are working with those who tend to be served more frequently by these processes. So I didn't, I don't know if that makes sense or answers in part what you're looking for.
Scott, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, and I would just touch on Steve, the specifics about a co-response or. Co-fire police response. I'm familiar with some in the South where there are fewer restrictions and fewer training responsibilities for police and fire. I'm not familiar with. Kalamazoo, Michigan one, but the mandates and licensing for police officers is extensive. And I know it is to some degree with the fire and Jimmy could jump on board, but, you know, just the initial training for to become a police officer is. Twenty four to twenty six weeks of training. And then there's annual trainings that go along with that. And then additional annual in-service trainings of a minimum of forty hours annually and it's usually more around seven. minimum of 40 hours annually, and it's usually more around 70. So specific to firearms and first aid response, and, you know, the district attorney's mandates as first line reporters and that sort of thing. It would be in a very difficult process to go through for either a fire off, a fireman, or for a police officer to be cross trained. I don't know if we could do it.
That makes sense. Thank you so much.
From the fire part?
Yeah.
Tim, did you want to add?
Yeah, I would, I would agree, agree with that. You see that a lot in the South and in the Southwest. They're, I mean, they're called public safety, safety officers. And really, what, what you get is a high, a hybrid. And it's, it's almost a jack of all trades, but master of none. You really don't get, you really don't get the full flavor of the public, of a fire, fire, firefighter, or police officer with that. It's, it's, it, last time I heard it, heard it's broad, brought up was years, years and year, year and years ago, here in, in, in Mass. And it's, it's some, something that would be tough, 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 tough to get, get through. We're a lot more. We're, we're a lot, a lot, this state is a lot more strict in terms, terms of training and certification than you'll find down, down south, or in the, or in the, the South, the South, Southwest for each, for each of those professions.
So, the Shalini?
Yeah, I'm also full of hope and excitement that we are really working hard. And thank you, Paul, and the implementation team, each one of you who's putting in extra hours, because I know this work is so important and so overdue, and so really excited about that. My question last time was around what kind of calls are going to go to the CREST program? And what I heard from the Community Safety Working Group last time, and then from Paul today, is that LEAP will be doing that work for us. So that sounds really exciting to me. And when I went to LEAP's website, that's a question I had, was there are two categories of calls, one were behavioral health calls, and this, these are the ones that typically go to these programs is behavioral health, which is lower risk calls related to mental health, addiction, homelessness. And the second was around quality of life, so disturbances, suspicious persons, trespassing. So the question was, sort of, you know, this idea that we want to make sure that this program is a success, and which means that we want to be able to staff it fully because of people are feeling they don't know who to call, and it's not, so, you know, so, so do we have a sense of which category, are we doing both at the same time? Or it seems like we may want to start with behavioral health first? And so which category are we starting with? And the second question is, do we have a sense of how many that is, like, do we have, will a staff of five people be enough? Because that seems really important, that whatever we decide that we have the staff to be able to respond, so will five people be enough? And then the third thing I wanted to say was that, you know, as a person of color, I understand racism. You know, I'm from South Asia, so no way pretend that I understand what Latina women go through, or Black women go through. But I have experienced racism, and I think it's a systemic thing. And we cannot separate policing from the rest of, you know, racism in our community. And so investing in a diversity officer is really important. So I'm happy to see that you have that position. But that being said, I also heard the goal is that we want to make the CREST successful and sustainable, which means we want to also keep increasing our revenues without burdening people with property taxes and so forth. And investing in an Economic Development Director is really important, because revenue will not grow on its own. And we really, really need someone to focus on that, even if we plan to commit that this percentage of the revenue that will be generated from the Economic Development Director goes to the CREST program or whatever. But, but we really do need to invest in an Economic Development Director to make sure that we are creating new channels of revenue for our town. So that's all.
So on the calls, do Scott or Mike, I mean, you had that conversation recently with LEAP, I think.
Yes. Shalini, so Captain Ting and I met for the third time with the Law Enforcement Action Partnership this morning. And we have previously sent them all of our call volumes, everything that we respond to. So they are beginning the process of nitpicking what each call means and what it entails. And they're doing this with a number of communities that we might be the smallest community they're dealing with. That's okay, they're comfortable with that. So this morning's meeting with Captain Ting and I involved trying to dig into the weeds. Okay, what does this call actually mean? Now, you didn't understand, like, noise disturbances. How does that work? And what kind of a response would that be for a, for a university community? So we had to explain, it could be anything from two people on a porch talking too loudly, to 5,000 people at a, at a, you know, mega, mega party. So, you know, they're, we're trying to now go into the weeds, and Captain Ting is really crunchy numbers for them about what every call means, what the response would look like. And they've pretty much identified, it looks like maybe four or five categories of calls that we might be able to divert some, not all, calls to a CREST group. So, for instance, not every, something simple like a well-being check, right? So well-being check could be a parent who's calling because they haven't heard from their student for a day and a day and a half. And we get those types of calls. I texted my daughter, and she hasn't responded to me. Could you check on her? It's that simple, right? And then, most recently, we had one last week where nobody had heard from this person, and they had been deceased for over a week. So there's differences where community responders could handle types of, those types of calls. And then the dispatchers would need to do more in-depth, hate to use the word questioning, but getting more information from the callers about what exactly it is they're looking for, for, for a response. So I think there's going to be a lot more work that LEAP groups is going to be requesting of us, and of probably other town departments. So they're going to be expanding who they're going to be talking to.
And you'll have to remind me of the other two questions, Shalini.
Yeah. One was then, do we feel that five people will be enough? I think you have a budget for five people will be enough to.
So we see this as a pilot program, and having it work at a small level, and then being able to analyze it and evaluate it initially. And that's why, you know, it's a several months evaluation period that then would be looked at for higher, higher level of funding for FY23. I mean, one of the challenges for us is when do calls come in? It's all, it's not just the type of calls, but also when do we tend to see those calls? We know that there's, there's a pattern typically for most calls. And what is the, the goal that we're doing? Are we saying we want to answer 100% of the calls? Or is 80% enough? Or is 50%? You know, we want to establish what is the right level of response that we are trying to achieve? And what's the response time expectation? So I think when you're building the program, we want to set up the metrics so that we can say, is the program working or not? Is it not working? Because we didn't give it adequate resources, we need to add people, so it does work better. It's, it's looking at a program that, you know, as you're building a program, you want to make sure that it's, again, our metric is about, does it make the community feel safer at the end of the day, because we responded differently? And I think it will. I think evidence from other communities is that it does. It doesn't fix every problem, and we don't claim that it will. But I think this is an important step. And the third was.
About the economic development?
Yeah, you know, I hear you on that. And, you know, it's, it's also an important position. You know, we will explore other avenues of funding to support that effort, that work. You know, a year ago, Dave Zomack, after the murder of George Floyd, we just said we are woefully and ill-equipped to really process the importance of this, because we're who we are. And we didn't, and we didn't have the enough of our, of the BIPOC community available and present and in a decision-making role that would, would have, they need, we need, we need that presence.
I hear you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mandy?
Thank you. So I'm going to get back to money for a little bit, because I appreciate the need to find an ongoing revenue source for funding of this. And so when I was doing my calculations on the police line budget, I know we froze two positions this year, but I also know four to five positions are open. And in the budget, there's about, on the policing line, there's about $4.8 million in salaries for approximately 48 positions, which averages out to about $100,000 a position. You said for the community services that you were moving two positions over, but only funded $130,000, which I assume are starting salaries for police officers, but the positions that became vacant were not being paid starting salaries. So I'm wondering why the, those two positions equated only to $130,000 and not closer to $200,000. And then on top of that, if we have four positions open, is it possible to move those other two position salaries over to get closer to $400,000, given just the dividing of positions into amount of money in the salary line that would, would give us, without even having to use the replacement funds, or much less use of replacement funds under the ARPA, or, I'm not sure, whatever it's called, government, you know, federal funds to start doing that without, you know, without necessarily harming the police response for the next year. Because I know when you've got seven months of no response at all, and from this CREST program, because it takes time to bring up, the, the police, by default, are doing those responses. So we can't, you know, transfer things over immediately and all. But, but with that, you know, I, to follow up on Shalini's point about are four to five employees enough? It sounds like you're starting with a one-shift, five-days-a-week plan. Maybe seven-days-a-week plan. So eight hours a day of, of doing this, if you're going to have all four employees working at the same time. If not, are we only, are we looking, given, given the CREST, the Community Safety Working Group's proposal of two, two, two-person teams per shift. So is the plan to start with essentially a third, you know, sort of one shift a day, instead of two or three shifts a day? Or is the plan to start 24 hours a day, three days a week? And I understand some of these might not be, be notified. But the question would be, is one shift enough for the CREST program to actually pilot it? And then the third one is, is for the chief. Because I assume this, this determination would be similar for both programs, which is, there is, in order to do a 24/7 force response, and, and the, our Chief Nelson would also be able to do this, we need a certain minimum number of people because of vacations, because of, you know, there's just five people overall to cover 40, if they only work 40 hours a week, the number of hours in a week, you need a minimum of five overall. But they take vacations, they get sick. So in general, what is, if you want two people on duty at all times, do we have an idea of what the number, the minimum number of people to guarantee, to patrol officers, to guarantee, to firefighters or EMTs, to guarantee to CREST people are always on duty? Do we have an idea of what that number is? And I ask that because I'm trying to get an idea for CREST, whether the Community Safety Working Group's plan of 16 responders is, is, is a reasonable number, because I don't actually know whether that would, could be enough for 24/7 service for two shifts type thing. So those are my initial questions. Thanks.
Well, Paul, can I, sorry, Paul, can I jump in? I can tell you that when we started at the dispatch center, we ran two people a shift on a four-on-two schedule, so you need nine people to cover that. But we ran, there's problems you talked about. Anytime somebody's out, it leads to overtime. Somebody gets stuck working a 16-hour shift, now they're sick the next day, and it kind of compiles itself. We're up to 12. There's formulas out there, like Relief Factor formulas, that with our staffing, it says we're supposed to have 15 people, which I think would be a little excessive. We'll take them if you got them. But so nine people, if you wanted to run a four-on-two schedule, eight-hour shifts, four on, two off, you could make it happen with that as a starting point.
And in terms of, you know, and that's assuming a four-on-two schedule, right, first off, which is what police typically work. The other thing in terms of our, the pilot, we were looking at one, two, two responders on at a time. So two, not four at a time. So as our, for our pilot, we would look at two on a time, so 16 hours a day roughly. We probably would need, we may need some part-time employees to support the weekend work and things like that. The budget sort of is more complex.
Yeah, so the 130 was based off of two of the vacant positions, or two of the sort of lower level positions. We didn't, weren't sure how the, some of the vacancies are at different levels. So we're not sure how those are going to be filled over the coming years, or some of the people on the lower level are going to get pushed into those higher positions. So the 130 was based off roughly two $65,000 positions. The personnel line includes other things and sort of straight salaries. So there's, there's an overtime line in there, there's educational incentives, things like that, we didn't touch, because they were sort of, other than the 40,000 identified that we, we've found that we could get rid of, or shift out. We didn't touch those, because those are sort of unique on a year-to-year basis. But that's one of the things that, once these two positions are gone, we'll reassess. Once these two positions are shifted, we can reassess and see if there's flexibility there.
So a couple of other things on that. So when, when a higher position person, paid person leaves, we always budget at the lower level, so that, because a new person won't be stopping. They typically don't start at the beginning. And I think our beginning salaries are in the 40s, I think, for police officers, someplace in there. So I think that that's, that's one thing. Also, just for FY22, the reality is, when you're a town employee, you are not eligible for vacation for the first six months of your employment. So there wouldn't be any vacation permitted during that first six months. But that would have to be calculated, like Mike said, because that will, that will catch up on us pretty quickly. And then we don't want to be in an overtime situation, because that's, that's not the best place to be.
And just to add one thing real quick, the, the positions we budgeted in the pilot program, we picked sort of middle of the road, near the top for those positions, thinking that the skill sets might require that. Again, there might be flexibility there when we actually fill these positions, based on the experiences of the people that fill them, that they could come in higher, but they could also come in lower. So there might be more flexibility there.
George?
Thank you, Andy. Paul, I like the approach you're taking here. It actually gives me some sense of optimism and excitement. And I think I share that with a number of my colleagues. I'm not always felt that way, and I hope it'll stay with me for a while. I like the idea of establishing proof of concept, that, and then evaluating after initial trial. I like the collaborative approach that you're endorsing here, where we're bringing all the major actors to the table, and everybody's contribution is important and valued, looking to other towns and communities, other agencies for help. These, I think, are really excellent ways to approach this, and I appreciate that. I do have, you know, when somebody says that, you know, then, and then the other shoe, right? But I do share the concern, I think, of a few others, as been mentioned already. I do think the loss of the Economic Development Director position is, is not a good idea. And that's something that, that we'll come back to at some later point, but I just want to note that. I understand the, the pressure to find funds, and and right now, maybe that's the only option you see. But I don't, I don't agree with that. And I think it's not a good thing. And I just have a quick question for the chief. I'm just curious, in this initial kind of program that you're proposing, some of the funding will come from the loss of, it's described as educational incentives. And I just wonder if the chief could just briefly describe what that means in practice, what is given up or lost when those funds are taken from the police department and given to this program?
Can I just jump on that one real quick? So the, the educational incentives we're talking about here, they were literally over budgeted. That, that was something when we went back and we were answering a question for one of the finance committee members, we found a mistake in sort of the calculation of the educational incentives. So that 40,000 that we're moving out, it's not a loss of educational incentives for any of the officers. It's just, it's getting it to where it should be.
Anything else, George? Evan?
Yeah, excuse if you can hear the lawnmower in the background. So I want to back up Jordan Shalini's statement, and this probably comes as no surprise to you, Paul. I understand the need for the DEI I understand the need for the DEI director and I commend you for working to find a source of funding for that. I cannot accept that funding being through eliminating the Economic Development Director position. You know, this position has been open for about a year and a half now. And, you know, a lot of us have been nagging you about it for that entire year and a half and been frustrated at you dragging your feet at that. I think a lot of us were willing to accept that during the financial uncertainty of COVID, it didn't make sense to add a new full-time staff position when we were trying to make sure we didn't have to lay off any other of our existing staff. But now that we're coming out of COVID and we're looking at economic recovery, this is the exact time that we need an Economic Development Director. And my frustration is that we're sitting here trying to figure out how to fund new staff positions and new programs. And the reason that's difficult is we're trying to fund new positions and new programs from a budget that is already stretched to capacity, right? And so we've created this zero-sum game where to increase funding for one department or to create new staff positions, some other department has to lose. And so in this case, you're arguing that we should fund the DEI director by defunding by 100% the Economic Development Department, right? And that's an unfortunate situation for us to be in. And I think what Shalini pointed out is that an Economic Development Director who does a good job, who can look at increasing investment in AMERST, increasing local business activity in AMERST, increasing redevelopment in AMERST, can help grow our budget, right? So instead of fighting over all of this and having to move this from here to there, we can just grow the pot of money. And so we know, for instance, you know, a lot of folks might not like One East Pleasant Street, but the assessed value of that land went from 2.7 million to 19 million, right? So we had an incredible increase in tax money that probably is about what it costs to hire the DEI director. And so to me, it is short-sighted to eliminate the Economic Development Director position to fund this other position when the Economic Development Director position is one that can help grow our budget so we can continue to fund these new initiatives. So I understand it's sort of the easy option because it is a vacant position that has an amount of money attached to it that's about what you want to spend. I don't think it's a good option. So I'm going to ask you to reconsider that. And if we're, we really want to fund the DEI director position, I think we need to find another source of money because I don't think that this is a good option.
Thank you.
I think I'm muting helps. First of all, I, I'm glad to have an opportunity to look at this tonight, both from the perspective of what we originally saw and what we're now seeing. But more importantly to me is looking at it from the perspective of what the Community Safety Working Group has just talked about, what they've learned and what they've brought to us. And then starting to see that incorporated into how Paul is thinking about this. Some of you know my background and some of you probably don't know my background. I've, I've written grants and held and used or worked with grant teams that have done $30 million proposals over a five-year period and won them. So what we have now is an enormous amount of research. We have a committee that has already formed the thinking about this. And I already know there's two state funding opportunities out there for exactly these kinds of programs. So I've sit here today and think of us as putting a serious base on the ground around we can now start building. And I know grant fund, grant funding is risky, okay? Because it goes away. But it gives us an opportunity to take this, to build on it, to add to it, grow it even faster than Paul is laying out. Because this kind of money is now available. It's not 10 years from now, it's not five years from now, it's available now. And because of all the work the Community Safety Group has done and because of all the work the chief has done and Paul and his staff have done and the networks we're now connected to because of this, we're sitting in a gorgeous place. I wish I could have write a proposal today using everything that already is on paper in AMERST about this. Because the pieces are all there. And with this, with the funding that the town will put forward, we have the opportunity to grow this program, not just as a pilot, but as a longstanding program. I say that, I also have to say, I do not support not funding the Director of Economic Development. So I'm going to encourage that we find other funds for that as well. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call on Pat next because I'm trying to get to people who haven't been kind of duplicates until the end. And at some point, I'll want to bring in the Community Safety Working Group, but anyway.
Thank you. I feel very lucky that we have a chamber and a bid that collaborate with the town so directly. And I feel like with their support, we can continue to be creative around economic development. What concerns me is sort of the replacing that position with a position that can creatively bring our community together, that can heal our community, can, it seems to me to be much more important than an Economic Development Director right now. An Economic Development Director didn't bring in the Eruptor Lab, which is a potential possibility that we have. And with that coming here, we have the opportunity for other kinds of groups like that who are going to be doing research and collaboration and innovation. Nobody brought that in except the guy who wanted it and Stan Rosenberg. The, we need, we need to address racism. That to me has much more value than anything else right now. And I wish I could be more articulate, I have all kinds of notes here, but it's not working to try to follow them. Somebody in another context said, follow the money. I'm going to say, the money is there and getting an Economic Development Director in a year, in another year, waiting another year so that this program can get off the ground, so it can do the kinds of grant searching that Lynn is talking about, seems to me to be the most important investment we can make in our community. And so I wish I had a a more detailed or specific replacement for the Economic Development Director. It is not as important a position, given the willingness we have to have developers come in and everything else. That is not what's going to secure the future of this community. But the, this program and a Director of Equity and Inclusion will help the development of this community.
So I want to urge my fellow counselors to try and stick to questions at this point, though I appreciate wanting to make statements too. But we are wanting to make sure that we focus on questions also. Dorothy?
No, I do want to make a statement. I acknowledge the good points that have been brought up, but I trust that the same practical idealism that has shaped this proposal will solve these problems. I totally approve this thoughtful cooperative plan. And I do disagree, I don't think our budget is stretched to the max. People who manage our money have many wise ways of dealing with money. So I'm just saying, I accept this proposal with faith and confidence that the things that need to be corrected or ironed out will be. I think it's fabulous. I was shocked and surprised when I read it to get such a detailed, practical plan that I can see making a great difference in the lives of many people.
Darcy?
Yeah, I just wanted to say briefly that I agree with Pat on the issue of the, the Economic Director. I think that we, you know, we're one of the very, very few communities in Massachusetts that has a bid. And so we have a bid and a chamber and, and, you know, they provide a lot of advocacy on economic development, so that is a good thing. And I just wanted to also make a comment that I'm excited that we're working with this Harvard group, looking at best practices in other communities. And I would just suggest the possibility of Ithaca because they are on the cutting edge in this area. They have a population very similar to ours, their college community. And, you know, we're looking at them with climate action and with zero waste. And I, I see that they're also on the cutting edge of reparations. And they have a, a new plan around that. And lastly, I have a question and that is, I'm just wondering, what would be, and maybe you've already mentioned it, forgive me if you have, is what would be the projected FY '23 budget for this? And how would it differ from what the Communities Safety Working Group is putting forward for, for the overall budget?
Are you looking at me through Zoom? I can see your eyes looking at me to, to answer that. So to maintain the four community responder positions, a director position and the administrative support position for a full year, we would have to add about $300,000 to $350,000 to the budget. The big reason why that's a little bit higher than what we're adding for FY '22 is because the pension costs associated with all these positions, we don't, we're not expected, we're not anticipating having to pay it in FY '22 because if they're not employed as of October, then we don't have to pay the pension for that year. The following year, they'll be here the full year, so the, the full pension impact will hit. And then insurances will be the full year and, and salaries will be the full year. So again, it'll, it'll vary based on who we hire and what, where they are on the wage scale and if they take insurance. But we're estimating between 300,000 to 350,000 to maintain the four full-time responders, plus the director, plus the administrative support position. And then for every additional community responder that the town would like to add, ballpark of about $90,000 if we use the same sort of estimates as we use for the existing positions, of about $60,000 for wages and then the, the rest of it for benefits.
So how does that differ from what the, what was being requested by the Community Safety Working Group?
Paul, do you have their proposal? I think it was 12, but I could be off on that.
12 community responders?
Yes, 12, 12 full-time responders, four staff per shift, three full-time shift responder supervisors and one director plus one full-time administrative assistant. So that was just for the program, that, that doesn't count the dispatch thing, dispatch options. So, yeah, their, their, their program would be much more robust than what the pilot would look like. And if we wanted to go to there in year two, it would be significant investment.
So year two, meaning FY '23?
Right.
Anything else, Darcy? Okay, so we had four counselors who've previously asked questions. I'm going to call on them and then in the meantime, as that is reaching its conclusion, I'll ask that Athena bring in members of the Community Safety Working Group. I know that both co-chairs have their hands up and I want to be able to have them be able to ask questions about the proposal and give their thoughts on the subject too. So we'll do the four people who've previously asked questions as counselors. And then in the meantime, we'll be ready to bring in people from the working group. Kathy?
Thanks, Andy. I, I have, one is a question, as I, it's, it's a two-part question. One, we do have, two positions are removed out of the police department. There are potentially three vacancies. So my question, is there a possibility we could hold one position for a year or for half a year to see whether we, as you, as, or three quarters of a year, to see what happens to the workload and the response? You know, I was told earlier that there's a potential excellent hire, a person of color trained. So I'm not talking about all, but hold one. And does that potentially provide money toward the end of the year and ongoing then? The second is Amherst College and UMass. You haven't had time, I don't think, but Darcy's question of looking at FY '23, FY '24, is there some potential from the wealthier of them? As Amherst College is now teaching anti-racism, structuralism, they have their own history. Would they, in this case, ever do some pilot money? I know Bernie doesn't like me to use payment in lieu of taxes, so just some generosity money to Amherst. You know, so you probably haven't had a chance to talk to them. And then, Andy, you said no statements, but I do have one to make. I don't think we have a proof of concept for a one-person economic development position. When I'm looking at studies, small towns with big ideas and community economic development, they were often collaborative efforts with a BID, a chamber, a university. They weren't hire one person and oh my gosh, what you get. I don't think there is a proof of concept in a small town of a person and we've known, we've been trying to do this. So I think we have more, a lot of potential work. We've got incredible people in town, including at the university, who teach entrepreneurism to put for, to think of that as a collaborative effort. And we've got Chris Bestow and Dave Zomack, we've got people that have been thinking about this. I don't think we have a proof of concept that that slot, just as defined, would bring home. Lynn's idea of a grant getter, absolutely. But so I, there isn't a proof of concept on that position. I think we know a program like this, it could be successful. So my first, we're on future funding streams, questions?
So in terms of working with the university and the colleges, what I was thinking about is that I think they're going to walk down a similar path and that might, there might be ways we can collaborate with them and utilize and have some efficiencies of scale. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what I was thinking about. And we could always, you know, a lot of the calls that these people, the, the responders might be responding to might be students. And that would be something that we could track and then go to the university and say, pony up, it's your turn, you know, this is, this is what you need to do to meet this need. I think in terms of staffing for the, for the program, I think we, we wanted, you know, the first order of business is, is to look at the timing of the calls and to look at the volume of the calls. We need to really look at, dig down into those calls that we think, as many as we can to divert and see how many of those are successfully diverted and, and see how that's working out in real time. And I think, you know, next year, it will be a good year because we should be back to normal. And we hope that, that will give us a realistic assessment of what the need is.
Thank you.
Shall I?
I just want to clarify that I am not saying that DEI, the diversity of the Economic Development Director in lieu of the diversity. I strongly believe we need both. And if we don't have a diverse, an Economic Development Director, as Kathy was mentioning, we don't need one. We need then a committee, those towns that don't have the directors, they have an Economic Development Committee to just assume that the bid will do our job. No, they're doing their job, but they're not going to do the town's job of finding out the kind of opportunities we want, the kind that we're hearing about, the kind of development we want. Bid is not going to do that. They are doing an amazing job, but they're not doing our job. And, and the other thing is, we have amazing staff, but each one is, their plates are so full. Like Chris is doing a hell of a job at zoning and planning and Dave is doing so many things. So we do need a focused look at that. However, that should not be at the cost of, because if you had to choose, I would definitely choose a diversity officer. There's no doubt we have a need for that. But I'm saying, let's look for both. The question I had was about when you mentioned allocating 30,000 of ARPA funds for the diversity. for the diversity opposition and an existing half-full-time position. So what does that look like?
So we have an existing staff person who is, works part-time in the town manager's office and part-time in the human resources. And what the intent is with that, that thirty thousand dollars is to elevate that person to be a DEI coordinator role, not the director role, in addition to the director. So we would have someone who's already been on the town staff, who's been worked, doing a lot of work in our equity, core equity team, has been just getting rave reviews. And so we want to sort of carve that out as an opportunity for this person.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Notice that we had one counselor who's raised her hand and not been recognized previously, Sarah?
Thank you, Andy. So in thinking this out, first I want to say that I do think this was a tremendous amount of work and so much care has obviously gone into this and I am really impressed. So I don't want my next comments to make it seem like I'm thinking, oh, wow, you just didn't do enough because I don't think that at all. My question is sort of a practical one. In what we've heard from people who have called and written, made comments is that, you know, there are people in our community that don't feel comfortable calling the police. And I, what I'm, what I'm hearing, and obviously we don't know yet, but is that there could be an incredible amount of people who called just for someone who is from CRESS. So I know that we have to start out somewhere, but I was, I worry a little bit. I'm wondering like how, at what point will we start looking at how many calls are actually people who just want CRESS and would rather not have the police if there's a direct number? And if those become an overwhelming number of people, right? If someone is like, no, I need help with, I'm just going to use it, you know, I don't know. They need help with something that they do not want a police officer to respond to, your CRESS officers are already out. And that becomes a, something that happens all the time. I'm worried about the frustration that people will feel. And I'm, I'm just wondering how quickly the town can then start taking that information in and trying to shift things around. Because I, I wouldn't want the opposite to happen, that people are feeling like they had the option for CRESS, but they don't really. So I'm just wondering how, how flexible the town is going to be in looking at the information that comes in.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for that. I think, you know, I think the, the working group has been pretty explicit that they want a separate line that somehow gets managed. I'm not sure how that would work. I know that they've had independent conversations with dispatch about different ways to approach that. Some ideas have been just, can we just have a cell phone that goes directly to a CRESS employee? And I don't know the answer and what, what that means in terms of, you know, just make sure that if a call comes and it's, it's responded to properly and it's, so we aren't dropping calls when someone's in crisis. So, and that's why I said, I think that we may see an uptick in calls from people who have, are not going to call nine-one-one. We've heard a lot of people say, I'm never going to call nine-one-one, but I might call this because I do have needs. And so we don't know that until we start to roll it out and see what it looks like.
Awesome.
Thank you. I'm trying to figure out how to say this fast and I really appreciate being recognized a second time. I'm very happy to recognize the work of a current employee that's done and so, done so many wonderful things in so many ways. So pleased to see us grow our own. I've shared that with Paul individually as well. I want to make clear that I firmly believe we don't have to choose between the two positions. Pitting those two positions against each other was a mistake. It should not have been presented to us this way. I live in the real world where Amherst College and UMass, in addition to all the things they do indeed bring to our small town, we wouldn't exist if it wasn't for them. They do not and will not ever pay what our residents wish they would pay, despite all our efforts and many approaches. Yes, certainly sometimes we come up with a cool thing and we might very well get them to invent, to invest in a cool thing on a one-time basis. And that has happened, but we need to not depend on that. We need to figure out which thing that is, sort of like applying for a grant. And reflecting back to what everybody's been saying about how we need money to do the things we want to do. We don't bring in enough of that money with the staffing we have now. Yes, the eruptor is welcome, but it's a complete one-off. And I don't want to mess up the CRESS program. I don't want to slow down this amazing program in years two or three because we say, well, you know, we haven't had that new growth coming along. We don't have the money to do the things we need to do because we've talked about repeatedly how our costs go up every year. I'm also going to say very bluntly in a way that I'm sure is going to offend any number of people, that we have a very poor history of diversity initiatives with our hires, going back over twenty years, when we had a human rights director that was a part-time position, then we had combined human rights, human resources directors. Very little progress on many issues was made. Amazing progress has been made with an, with a current staff member and with the core equity team. That was not made over many years of hires that were not clear on what they were supposed to be doing. Depending on our terrific chamber and bid is not a long-term reality. It's the particular team we have had in the last couple of rounds. It's not always been true of the chamber. It's not always, that we haven't always had a bid. And so to say that they could just take care of it, just doesn't make sense. We can do better. We cannot do better doing things with the way we've always done them. Putting out our standard job description for a diversity and equity inclusion officer is not going to get us what we want. Putting out our standard job description is not going to get us the economic development director that we want. I know that we can do better at this. I know that if we send out the standard things, none of us is going to see what we want. So what I don't expect to have answered tonight, because it certainly wasn't part of the presentation, but soon, is how we're going to do a better job with that. And hearing that you're going to have slightly different people at the table, maybe will help, but it won't change our track record, which is poor. So we need to do better and we need both positions and we can find a way to fund it. And I know Andy will love it when I say, take it out of OPEB for a couple of years. Thank you.
So I'm going to recognize Mandy as the last counselor for this section of the meeting. And then I'm going to ask the co-chairs of the working group about whether they would like to convene their, convene a meeting and how they want to proceed. But Mandy?
Thank you so much for recognizing me and I'll try to be really quick. I'm, I'm just thinking about this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Every year, you know, we, if we fund FY twenty-two, you've already stated we need about three hundred to three hundred and fifty to keep the same level of staffing in FY twenty-three and then adding essentially two, two-person shifts a year to get up to twelve people, which would be, you know, that it looks like we're planning on finally getting to twelve people in FY twenty-five. Assuming that we only add about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to this program, that would keep four people at FY twenty-three, eight at FY twenty-four, twelve at FY twenty-five, which would be the first year that, given my previous question, that we could likely staff twenty-four, seven. If I'm doing all of my math right quickly and I'm looking at the projected budget that you did and you projected out FY twenty-three, four, five and six. And we're only projecting an addition of five hundred to six hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year on the town side in those three years. And so I, I'm not sure where it's coming from to also keep all the rest of the salaries up. So, you know, I, I, I think we need a, I'm hoping we have a better idea in another six months where we're going to get it the next FY twenty-three, four and five, including, and this is where my request comes in. Most years we have a surplus. FY twenty, it was one point six million dollars. According to your budget document on page forty-five, I didn't have time to go back. Has there been an analysis of where that surplus is every year? To see whether we are actually over budgeting some parts and departments and why we keep getting, I, I'm not upset about a surplus. I'd much rather have a surplus. But if we need an extra three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year and we're regularly one, running one to one and a half or more million dollars in surplus a year, we should be analyzing why we're running those surpluses to see if there's a reason for that, that we could transfer the money.
Paul, do you want me to start? So I think one piece of the budget is we're not predicting how many positions will be added in FY twenty-three. We're giving you the number. We know that there will be have, decisions will have to be made in FY twenty-three. And we imagine that the data analysis that'll be done in FY twenty-two will inform what happens for FY twenty-three. So it's going to be clear that we are not, we gave you that number so you, you know, so that we can estimate, but we're not predicting where it will go. And FY twenty-three could go up more than two positions or not. I don't know. And then the, I know the, you know, one to one and a half million sounds like a lot, but when you're talking about an eighty million dollar budget, you know, you're talking about two or three percent. You know, Sonya can weigh in if she wants, if she's been here longer than I, if she's noticed any trends. But I would say two to three percent is not a terrible thing on an eighty million dollar budget. And that's one of the areas where we just had our bond rating updated. That was noted as a particular strength of the town is our strong budget performance and that helped us get a, maintain our double A plus and helped us get lower, you know, a one percent interest rate on our ten million dollar bond, which will save the town money going forward. And it's also what's helped us build up our, our reserves so that we have funds for the four, you know, to, to do the four building project planning and all that. So we can look at it, but I'm, I'm just reluctant to, you know, try to budget more aggressively. If we see any areas where we feel like we're overly conservative, we can certainly take a look at it. But I think we generally try to justify everything we budget. Sonya, do you want to weigh in at all on that?
Sure. On the, on the revenue sides, the surpluses that come from there, a lot of times are for years, we're getting about three hundred thousand dollars a year for Medicare Part D. And that doesn't get budgeted, it just falls to free cash. But then we have to vote that from free cash into the OPEB fund. So that doesn't get budgeted for. And there's a lot of things like that. If we're going out for a bond, sometimes we get pretty decent bond premiums. We budget all our revenues very conservatively. For operational turnbacks, that's mainly from staff turnover. And also we have to budget for what the, we think the cost is going to be for that year. We might have like property and casualty insurance. It was pretty high at one point in mid-year. We decided to, to bid for it and we saved a bunch of money on that. So that gets turned back from the savings. So we try to constantly bid out things and, and get savings, but we can't not budget for it. Because you, you can't have a budget deficit. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts to that. We can pretty much give you the detail of what got turned back. And if you go back to the quarterly reports that are on the accounting website, if you go back to the end of year ones every year, you pretty much get a detail of what got turned back and why.
I think one of our missions, if, to bring this new department to the council, would be a funding plan to show how we possibly could fund it and what it would look like.
Thank you. So in a segue to Brianna and Alicia, it's the co-chairs of the community safety working group, welcome you to the meeting. Do you need to call your meeting to order? Do you, do you feel that's necessary? And it's first question.
Andy, thank you for recognizing us. I am more than comfortable to call the meeting to order, if that's okay. But before I do so, I just want to mention, Paul, in your slideshow, you included CSWG reps being a part of the implementation team. So I felt a little bit offended that me and Ms. Walker as co-chairs and other CSWG members who have worked months on this project with consultants were in the audience while you all were having a conversation about CRESS and asking questions that we may have been able to answer more appropriately. So I just want to say that before we get started.
Yeah, well, thank you. Sorry that it, it was difficult to arrange to, to figure out how to do this meeting. So I, I apologize too. But how, how do you, how would you like to proceed now? It's because obviously we wanted you to hear the conversation and the questions from the council. And we wanted you to make sure that you had an opportunity then to provide input on the information that we've received and the questions and answers that you've heard.
Well, first I'd like to call the meeting to order and I'm sure from their community safety working group members, I saw several of them had their hands up. And as I can imagine, some of us have questions for you and I'm sure we can answer questions more appropriately if council members want to ask us directly as we've been, again, working on this for months. So at this time, I'm just going to call the meeting to order and call each member who's here. My name is Brianna Owen and I'm calling this meeting to order as the vice chair of the community safety working group. Governor Baker's March twelfth order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law allows us to hold this virtual meeting of the working group meeting with the finance committee. Given that we have a quorum present, I'm calling the May twenty-seventh meeting. I will call upon each member at that time. You should unmute yourself and say present. This is going to indicate, indicate that I can hear you and you can hear me. Please unmute your mic after saying present. Ms. Ferreira? Mr. Vernon Jones?
Present.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Ms. Bowman? Ms. Pat?
Yeah.
And I believe you. Do we have Mr. Cage?
He's in the audience right now with his hand raised.
Can we bring Mr. Cage in?
Is he listed as a different name than?
Darius Cage. Yeah.
Doesn't have his hand up. I see him now.
Thank you.
Mr. Cage, sorry for your late arrival. If you could just unmute your mic and say present so that we could get the meeting started.
Present.
Thank you. So now I'd like to pass the mic over to Ms. Walker. And I'm sure other community safety working group members have comments and questions about this budget. And we also prepared a presentation emphasizing why the budget we made is so vital.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. I just wanted to let you guys know that we came here today under the impression that we were going to be able to present our recommendations to the budget to the finance committee. I also wanted to say that to host an entire conversation surrounding our recommendations without having us be in the conversation is extremely disrespectful and silencing. We have spent months on this work and we are the experts. We cannot create something efficient for our community if we do not listen to our community members and have them at the table. This is our work and we came to present to you. And so I'm hoping that although it was not in the agenda to present, that we can screen share at this time so that we can have our voices be heard and have our recommendations be not interpreted by you all, but given to you directly from our group.
As you proceeded, just to be conscious of the fact that everyone here heard the presentation on Monday. And we welcome building upon it and please proceed.
Thank you, Andy. The presentation is slightly edited from Monday's presentation. We are aware that most of you have seen it before. But we want to, there are, there are some information that will be repetitive and this is for emphasis because there is clearly still a large lack of understanding. So we're going to start again from the beginning. And I will pass it back over to Brianna.
So at this time, I want to, I don't want to reintroduce the entire community safety working group, but I want to read their names so that you all have an idea of who is on our group and can put a face to the name. So we are the Community Safety Working Group, Tashina Bowman, Darius Cage, Deborah Ferreira, Pat Oniwabaku, Brianna Owen, myself, Russ Vernon Jones, Alicia Walker and Paul Wiley, who resigned. I want to, I want to emphasize our charge because it seems like it's being lost in the conversations that were had before we were put onto the meeting. So the Community Safety Working Group was assigned the following purpose, to A, make recommendations on alternative ways of providing safety services to the community and B, to make recommendations on reforms to the current organizational and oversight structures of the Amherst Police Department. We were specifically charged with studying complex issues of delivering community safety services to ensure racial equity, collecting data from people's experiences in Amherst, engaging the community most impacted by policing to develop alternatives and identify solutions to diagnose problems, investigating existing alternative models and programs for providing community safety services, examining existing town funding priorities regarding safety services, exploring models of resident oversight departments and recommending reforms to the current organizational and oversight structures of the current Amherst Police Department. Again, I want to bring up the intention of our recommendations because I've heard a lot about the economic position being talked about in this meeting. And I just want to emphasize- And I just want to emphasize how important equity in the town is and how invaluable and equitable town is. So we want to point out that the Community Safety Working Group was intentional about the recommendations we made. The recommendations have two goals, to ensure that any public safety response is anti-racist, equitable, just and fair, and that we offer preventative services that get at the root of assisting our residents to avoid necessitating public safety involvement in the first place.
The CSWG finds the historical context of white supremacy in Amherst extremely relevant to our work and to the town's commitment to dismantle white supremacy. The founding of Amherst is based on genocide. Amherst's legacy is controversial due to his expressed desire to exterminate the race of indigenous people during Pontiac's War and his advocacy of biological warfare in the form of gifting blankets infected with smallpox as a weapon. Our group is well aware that Amherst was once home to slave owners, was once home to documented redlining and once home to primarily white schools. This history has manifested into the community we are living in now. By budgeting and financially supporting these initiatives, the town in the long run and maybe even in the short run, will invest in the future, which will be a blacker, browner, more linguistic diverse than it is now. Additionally, investments in a more diverse and inclusive town assures an influx of creative, entrepreneurial and younger residents. Historically, deeds were restricted to not allow certain residents to reside in certain areas. Black and brown families were pushed to less desirable areas like housing complexes. And today, the demographics are not much different. Modern day redlining and the rise in rent continue to keep black and brown low-income families in these same areas if they aren't forced out of Amherst completely. Many social service organizations that we connected with let us know that their employees travel from outside of Amherst to work here due to the unfeasible rental prices. Many town staff also do not reside in the city of Amherst, perhaps due to the high housing prices as well. This provides further insight on the disconnect in services being offered in this town. How does redlining and the rise in rental prices in Amherst influence current policing methods and outcomes? The tendency of low-income working classes and students with families is to access housing through apartment rentals. And as you can see from the chart, a large portion of APD calls are officer-initiated and with the highest concentration being on one street in particular and located in apartment complexes. A further breakdown of the data shows the difference in police conduct between certain complexes and single resident areas. And if you focus specifically on police-initiated calls, these disparities are very clear. The APD uses community policing models that include practices of surveillance and patrols which differ by neighborhood in terms of frequency and types of calls, with one of the methods being to identify specific problem-oriented areas of town and direct patrols to those areas. This has resulted in the profiling and over-surveillance of certain communities and in turn, certain individuals. Nationally, our research has shown that community policing has contributed to the death of BIPOC persons and not their safety. And if you focus specifically on police-initiated calls, these disparities are very clear. The APD, oh, I apologize. That was a repetition. Brianna, can you go to the next slide, please? On May twenty fifth, twenty twenty, George Floyd, a forty-six-year-old black man, was murdered at the hands of the Minneapolis Police. The repetition of these egregious incidences sparked national and local movements. Organizations and the advocacy of local groups like Defund 413, Racial Equity Task Force, Reparations for Amherst and the Youth of BLM have been doing tremendous work to bring education and awareness to inequities in policing and in our town. As a response to the national and local uprising on June first, twenty twenty, the town council adopted a resolution affirming the town of Amherst's commitment to end structural racism and achieve racial equity for black residents. And in order to commit to the affirmation, the town manager was assigned a goal that would help to specify what steps could be taken to help position Amherst in the direction of change. These are the goals that were set for the town manager. Our first recommendation is to create a BIPOC-led youth empowerment center and a BIPOC cultural center. Quality after-school programs designed with BIPOC teams in mind have shown to support and increase academic achievement and play a role in reducing other disparities. Youth programs promote positive social behaviors and emotional development and strengthen meaningful relationships between youth and community members. Culturally responsive mentoring, which operates within a framework of understanding of the social and cultural context in which youth live, provide added benefits to support their health and well-being. Research indicates youth do better after therapeutic interventions rather than punishing ones. And when we limit the reach of the justice system into their lives, whether we intervene before or after they mess up. BIPOC-led spaces serve as a mean of establishing community safety and in order for local governments to strengthen community safety and reduce over-reliance of the police.
I know we talked about the statistics on Monday, but I just want to emphasize again that the district is made up of over fifty percent of students who identify as BIPOC. And between two thousand and seven and two thousand and seventeen, Latinx students increased in the elementary schools by thirty percent. One thing that really stood out to me from Alisa Brewer's comment is the town doing the same thing and not seeing new results. I saw in the PowerPoint presentation that we were suggested to work with the, the School Systems Family Center. And while I think that's great, I also think that there's a reason why this group was put together. We are put together to make new ideas because the old ones were not giving you the new results you wanted. Our second recommendation is to create a well-funded Department of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. A department, a Department of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion elevates the role of DEI into the hierarchy of town administration. It prioritizes consideration of inclusion and equity throughout hiring, training, housing, policies, planning, leadership, the environment and the economy. It improves decision-making that better represents all communities and is less likely to suffer from unintentional blind spots and biases. It assures a more equitable allocation of public resources to all communities, not just a few, reduces staff turnover and increases employee engagement and awareness. And it builds community trust in town and offers more options for BIPOC and AAPI community members to be seen, seen as well as heard. Our next recommendation is to create an Amherst Oversight Board. And I know there's been a lot of kickback as to why we are requesting ten thousand dollars for each member to receive as a stipend. And I just want to communicate with you all that not all people in Amherst are able to serve on town boards and do this work without some form of financial compensation for the shifts that they're missing at work, the cost of childcare and other related expenses. By compensate, by compensating people appropriately, it will allow for diversity to be on this board, including racial, ethnic, gender, class diversity, thereby allowing those who are often marginalized and impacted most by policing to sit on this board. And this will play a crucial role in overseeing and monitoring both the Amherst Police Department and the CREST program. We need to ensure that it is a critical task that isn't left, left to the hands of a majority white board. We need to be conscious of the barriers that have stopped members from diverse groups from being able to be on the town council, the school committee and other committees, which most often correlates to money and time.
Our fourth recommendation is to create the CREST program. Um, a lot went into the development of creating CREST. So as you know, that we did take into consideration all of the community feedback, but we also did a lot of research. And so the research that we started with was investigating other models that existed in other towns. We did look at Eugene or the Kahoots Crisis Assistance Helping Out on the Streets program. We looked at Albuquerque Community Safety Alternative and the Denver Star Support Team Assisted Response. Um, in terms of, in terms of getting us into the direction of assessing what needs could work specifically for Amherst. And then just in regards to a comment that was made by another council member, we did also look at Ithaca, New York and what they are doing there in our research. Um, our fifth recommendation is to reduce the size of the Amherst Police Department. CREST is an alternative safety service to the Amherst Police Department. And so I just really want to emphasize this because I, I hear this getting lost a lot in the conversation. Our specific task was to come up with an alternative so that the people who the police do not work for have someone to call. This is not a mental health service, although it will be addressing some mental health needs that are currently being addressed by the police department. This is not a social service, although they will be providing social service-like things to the community. The CREST program, once fully funded, resourced and staffed, will lessen the need for the Amherst Police Department. With the shifting of non-violent calls to the CREST program, the Amherst Police Department officers will no longer need to operate at full capacity. The funding of CREST will reduce the APD and lessen profiling of BIPOC and AAPI residents and persons visiting Amherst.
And I, we added this slide because we wanted to clarify information around the reduction of APD officers. We are not asking for an immediate cut in officers this year. We're asking that positions stay, stay as they are so we can develop CREST, which is leaving the APD at forty-four officers with one officer who is in the process of retirement until the CREST program is fully funded, resourced and staffed. The CREST program, once is, once up and funded, will take an estimated twenty to thirty percent of calls from the APD. And the APD will not need overtime and absence of those positions being frozen because CREST will be responding to these calls. Our sixth recommendation is to continue the ongoing work of the Community Safety Working Group. It is obviously crucial that the CSWG continues for a number of reasons. I would say one of the biggest ones, just after attending this meeting, is so we can continue to connect with the community and create new ways to get new results. What, what has been done hasn't been working. These are new ways that will get new results. And we also need to stay together to be a part of the details and planning as the CREST program and other recommendations come into fruition. This is the budget that we put together to make these recommendations successful. We have used a number of metrics such as the non-used, the non-union Town of Amherst salary scale and also using Indeed as a way to look at the salary ranges for what we're asking from CREST responders in various positions. So this is our budget for the CREST program. And I know you guys all have this in your packet, so I won't leave it on screen for too long. And then this is our budget for the Department of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion and also the operating expenses for the, for diversity, equity and inclusion. And we are also able to compare the budget that we're asking to, to similar town departments because there's been this huge, this huge discussion over where the money is coming from and whether we're asking for too much money. So I just wanted to put the side-by-side comparison so you can keep that in mind while, while trying to come, while trying to understand where our budget was put together. So as you can see, it's the Amherst Police Department budget and then the CREST responder budget, the communication center staff and then the CREST dispatch personnel and so on and so forth. I'll leave this on screen for a little while. I know I sent it all to you all beforehand as well.
Um, we kept this slide in order to just give some suggestions that we had in, in terms of where funding can come from or where we can look more into funding these recommendations. Consider decreasing the seven million dollar budget of the Amherst Police Department. Use revenue generated by marijuana dispensaries. Federal stimulus money from the CARES Act funds have been discussed, and so we would like to look more into that as well. Use the money held in reserves for the emergency of racism and the continued harm it imposes on our community and the four million dollars that is held in the town's free cash fund. At our last meeting, we urged the town council to reflect on the, on the crossroads we are at in forging a new path towards our dream destination of a town that works for all of its residents and centers the most historically disenfranchised. I want you all to take a moment to reflect on your commitment to racial equity personally and in your role. What side of history will you be on? What legacy will you leave behind and what doors will you open? Let me paint this picture for you. Amherst is a town where all residents thrive, where families, young people, individuals, the elderly, the disabled and BIPOC residents have the knowledge and access to the resources that they deem important and essential to their well-being and the well-being of their families. A place where those in crisis know and trust who and where to turn, where power sharing and having a seat at the table is an integral part of how our town government and community safety functions, where folks feel powerful and knowledgeable to step into leadership and co-design the town we all want to live in. We have this opportunity in front of us and not only is it beneficial in regards to community safety and wellness, but to all other aspects of our town. I urge you to think of our entire community and how we could benefit from all of the CSWG's diversity, equity and inclusion recommendations in addition to CREST. Imagine thriving families who want to and are able to stay in Amherst and build community here. Think about resident retention and the revenue that could be created if our community feels truly supported and trusting of our government structures and the safety programs. Help us make Amherst diverse and welcoming and possible for all people to live, work, learn and thrive. Let's dream here together.
And then our last slide is the Amherst Town, Town Council's affirmation. These are your words, not mine, so I'm not going to repeat them. I'm just going to emphasize that the same actions aren't going to give new results. So I really urge you guys to keep our recommendations in mind and make them reality.
You know, thank you very much for the presentation. That was very helpful. Maybe what I would like to do is you have the opportunity to hear from other members of the working group who have their hands up is the next step and let's see if there are any counselors who have questions or other members of the finance committee who have questions that they would like to pose the, uh, primarily directed to you or they might circle back to the town manager, whichever one. But first of all, I see that both Deborah Ferreira and Russ Vernon Jones have their hands up. So Deborah? Please unmute.
Yeah. Thank you all for having us today. I want to point out that obviously I'm glad to hear that Mr. Bauchaman was able to move a little bit further. And I was happy to hear that a lot of the town councils kind of expressed a lot of support for our recommendations. And like I said, and that Paul was able to increase it. But like Brianna and Alicia said though, I, I did feel it was strange though that we weren't in the room though for the conversation. Because again, we are the ones with the information, so that felt strange. But I wanted to kind of point that out that obviously, you know, I was glad to hear that. However, um, we're here though still, as Brianna and Alicia stated, to, 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 to make our full recommendations. So for me, I mean, I have so many things kind of flowing in my head, right? Because obviously I wasn't, I wasn't able to ask any questions. So you're going to have to bear with me because I have quite a few things to kind of talk about. One, again, is, is from what we heard on Monday, which is, you know, I, I don't know how to impress upon you all, right? That this is critical, right? That we, you have members in the town of Amherst that do not feel safe. And most of these members are marginalized members, are BIPOC members. You need to make sure that they feel valued, that you feel respected and they feel included. So remember on Monday, I, I told you all, right? That whenever my seventeen-year-old, before he leaves the house, I am afraid for him. I am afraid for him. I have to basically remind him every time, be careful, drive carefully. I don't know if white parents in this town have to go through that process every single time. Not because, I'm sure you have to go through that process because hey, you know, things, but not that a policeman is going to stop and possibly hurt him. So I'm a member of this, this community and this is how I feel. And we have countless other members of this community that feel the same way. So let's start from that basis, right? So even though obviously I commend, you know, a Paul Bauchaman to, to having go further, but it's still not far enough for me because again, we have the full recommendations that we stated. So for instance, my questions, and I'll start with CREST, right? Is around, um, you know, you talked about calls directly to CREST. That's, that's pivotal. There needs to be a, a, an opportunity for people to contact CREST directly once this program starts, right? Because people do not trust contacting the police directly. So there has to be a separate, uh, ability for them to do that. So that was kind of like generalized, no specificity, um, shown in terms of how to do that. So that needs to happen. And with that, there needs to be education money, needs to be marketing money, needs to be that sort of thing. So people know that that, that, that number even exists. Because our population don't feel comfortable contacting the police when they're going through different things. So that has to be a part that we need to, to, to focus on. Again, yeah, stress that, I saw it in the, in the, in the presentation. But yes, CSWG needs to be involved in the conversations with the creation of this program. Know if that answer what's about it? Because we've, you, we've seen throughout this process that you need our voice. Our voice is always out. Our voice is not included. And if our voice is not included, then these, these, these issues are not going to be brought to the table. So yes, we need to be at the table and we need to be part of the, of the creation and the conversations, period. The other thing is that the program needs to be twenty-four seven when, when it first starts out. So I don't know how, I don't know how the, the, the four, five people are going to be able to do that. Sixteen hour, sixteen hours, they're only gonna be sixteen hours during the day? So what happens to the rest of the time? People are saying that they're afraid to call the police. So what's gonna happen for that other amount of time? So five, five people is not gonna cut it. So I want to hear what, what's the possibility for more? I was hearing a lot about, you know, FY twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. As, as Brianna and Alicia stated, for this first fiscal year, yes, we're not seeing anything besides the reduction in already kind of like not hiring more police and, and obviously the retirement, not hiring anyone into that, that position. And hopefully whatever monies is available, and I know you all are talking a lot about that, but whatever monies is available, needs to go into the CREST program and, and all of our other recommendations, right? But FY twenty-three, FY twenty-five, five twenty-five, why, you know, there, there should be more reduction, because a, a CREST is gonna be responding to those calls, right? So therefore, there's gonna be less police. You're gonna have to be lessening police in those years. Therefore, there should be money to go into CREST program, since we will be increasingly reducing police. So I didn't, I didn't hear a mention of that, okay? The other thing, too, is around, you know, our other recommendations. Critical, you know, our town is not inclusive. Our town is not equitable. A, a, a diversity, equity, inclusion department is critical. And, and I, I heard a count, you know, a few of the counselors bring that up, which I was very happy. I mean, I wasn't in the thing, but I was going like this in private, you know? So it's like, we, you know, that, that needs to be critical, because we, you're not inclusive, we're not diverse as a town. And also, when we're talking about the youth empowerment, we're talking about the BIPOC Cultural Center, which will be utilized by all families, not just BIPOC families. But when we're talking about that, it's because there's no space that feels safe for BIPOC families in the Amherst community, right? So when, when you're saying, well, why can't LSSC or other programs that are already established do that? Is because their, their space is not inclusive of, you know, of, of these other populations, and these marginalized populations. So we need to kind of really, you know, focus and, and hear that. So I think, you know, sorry, I, I mean, like I said, you know, since I wasn't in there, I couldn't ask my questions as they arose. But there we go. That's me. Paul, could I hear some, is there some responses to some of my questions?
Paul, go ahead.
Sure. Thanks, Ms. Ferrer. Yeah, I think, you know, the, the call-in number I tried to, I, I don't know the technological answer for that. I think I tried to say that there is a, I know the, the working crew had suggested a call-in number in that it actually, if we had one, it might increase the calls coming in. And that, because there's, I think I had heard from your testimony and from others that there might be people who won't call nine-one-one, but they may call a different number. So I think that that is a technological solution that we would talk with dispatch about. Where does that call land? Does it land at dispatch? Is there a separate person answering that phone, that, that type of thing? I don't know the legal requirements under calls for emergency assistance. We'd want to do some research on that. Again, I don't want to call it to be, you know, if it's unanswered or whatever. I think you're absolutely right in publicizing the number. If we put a number out there, we have experience with that with the COVID hotline. We need, we would need to really get that number out there as, as a special number that people could call in an emergency and get it through trusted networks for the people who are most likely to use it. The twenty-four-hour coverage, I get that. I think, you know, this is a, you know, where I differ with where the working group is, is that I'm suggesting a pilot program that would begin and then assess what the need is and, and sort of get our, we, we need to crawl before we walk, walk before we run. We need to sort of understand how this program, because it's not an off-the-shelf program, I don't think. I think we need to customize it for our community, so that's, that's how I'm approaching it.
Russell, Russ?
I would like to speak, but I'd like you to give an opportunity to my colleagues of color to speak first, please.
Okay.
Thank you for having me, and I want to start by really thanking the town manager for removing the Economic Development Director Fund, the DEI. I was one of the people that really opposed that position, because I felt that the position benefits the ID and the chamber. We've had economic development directors in the past, and I don't see, you know, what they did in the past benefited BIPOC community. I, I was, however, I know that the town manager has, you know, moved a needle a little bit, but I'm still not satisfied with our proposal. Pilot program will set CREST program for a failure, period. And I hear what the management team have, you know, have done. I appreciate your time. There, there are some of us in CSWG group who have experience in program development. I have been in human services, social services, mental health field for more than twenty years. I did do a restaurant, as you know, for a decade. But I am very familiar with this field. For me to sit through tonight, acting like it would take eleven months to develop CREST program is just ridiculous. CREST program is not a mental health treatment program. We, you know, we're not saying that we're going to be treating people that have behavioral health. We, you know, there would be resources that we can repair people to. And then to spend a whole eleven months is just, doesn't make sense to me. What I, what I observed, what I heard is make excuses. Back when people done, you know, they're not our priority. When we hear what you're saying, that we will do it later. It takes time. We want to make it work. We need to collect data. We need to do this, excuse upon excuse upon excuse. I felt very disrespected that we spent so many months putting this together, and then, you know, the town manager, when you gather your management team, you didn't even, you weren't even including us anymore. And just to get your report, like a couple hours, several hours this, today, before we come in here, you kind of threw us off, because it's not what we expected. I also want to speak about the reference made regarding that other resources in town, like the school, family center. And not to be insulting or anything, I'm sure the school staff who, who work at the family center, they're doing their best, but it's a disaster. It's not working. It's, it's a white space. And who is this pretending that is a white man? Who is Special Education Director? It's a white woman. And so that's not our space. You know, BIPOC families don't access services from there. I don't, I think you all are out of touch of what we've been telling you guys. You don't get it. And we, we hear all the nice talking and everything, but you don't live our experiences. It's not going to work. We need our own space. We need the BIPOC Cultural Center. We need CREST where people can actually feel comfortable accessing services. If you're going to staff, uh, come only for responders, it's not going to, sixteen hours a day. And then at the end of one fiscal year, you say, oh, it didn't work out, it's not working, let's move on. Let's go back to the old ways that it's not working. I have a lot to say, but I will stop. It's just, you know, if I sound frustrated tonight, it will be a light understatement. I feel that you guys are not taking BIPOC community seriously at all. I want to really shout out to a Pat, Councilor Pat DeAngelo. I, and there are some other people there. You guys have to do better. We pay taxes in this town. We're part of this, this community, and we're not benefiting from, from all the resources. Thank you.
Thank you to Sheena, Ellen, Alman. Please unmute.
Okay, sorry, my unmute button wasn't working. So I'm just gonna turn my camera on. So I'm gonna say first of all that I'm extremely disappointed, as are other people that are part of our group. And I'm gonna call it for what it is. It was, it was a very racist act for you guys not to include us in the conversation. And what I have to say to that is shame on you, Amherst. Shame on you, because you guys try to present yourselves as if you're this diverse community. I'm gonna give you a quick example. The first time I ever went to Providence, I was in the car, you know, just hanging out, kids in the back, and I looked up at a billboard. And I was like, oh my gosh, I want to live here. And my husband at the time was like, why? And I said, because I just saw a billboard that had a doctor's office that had very many different people. But the one thing I noticed about it, it didn't have one white person on the billboard. It was made up of people of color. As a woman who is a doula, a student midwife in this community, and who has lived here over thirty years, I have never had the option to have a birth worker be a person of color to support me in my birth. That is what Amherst represents to me. To walk into a room and be the only. To have people that were on school committee back in the day, because they felt like they knew my mom, look me dead in my face and say to me, when I was pregnant with my second son, is that child gonna be the sibling of that child? To have the audacity to ask me that question. That is an experience that I have had in this community. That was someone who was a person in the government of this community, looking me in my face. First of all, they both came out of my stomach, so that's the first thing. Second of all, mind your business. Like, the fact that I would have to even go there, I just looked at this person and was like, yes. And I walked away dumbfounded. To park in a spot with my handicap, my handicap flag, because I have rheumatoid arthritis, I am disabled, I have good days and bad days. And literally, and, and this, I, I will say this was not in Amherst, but this is, this is, this is encompassing of the whole area. There is no place in the valley that I can go that I don't feel this way. And so I got, I literally got harassed to tears by someone, because they didn't believe that I was disabled. To tears. But here's the kicker. The person who was with me, who was, who I thought was, who has had my back, literally made the situation about her. And she is a white woman, and this is, this, these are the things that we deal with in this community every day. I've lived here thirty years. I've gotten followed in CVS. I don't have a criminal record. I don't have, there's no reason for somebody to follow me in CVS, but they do. I remember my friends bragging about how they could go into CVS and nobody would follow them, but, you know, they would bring a black person in with them, because they knew they would follow the black person around and not them. These are things that happen in this community. Between the microaggressions, between the megaaggressions, between, you know, not even being asked to the table, or having to sit on the sidelines. Well, a white person interprets what my feelings are, or what my situation is, or what they think is best for me, is absolutely unacceptable. Shame on all of you who sat by and allowed that to happen. And the thing is, is that when, when, like, at our last meeting, I literally was like, I would love to take each and every one of you and drop you in a community of color where you know nobody, you know nothing, and tell you, you need to survive. Because the thing is, is that you would feel really out of place. And you would suddenly realize, wow, this must be just a smidgen of what it feels like. But see, the thing that I was like, but then, on the other hand, I know how our community works. We're not gonna let anybody go hungry. My door's open. My door's open. Everybody knows that they can call me, they can come by my house, they can come see me at any time. I will feed them. It doesn't matter how little food I might have in my refrigerator. It doesn't matter what is going on. I will drop things to make sure that somebody else is safe. And that's how we do in our community. Because it's not about how much money we make. It's not a, it's not about what status we are in the community. It's about embracing everyone in our community. Amherst, you're failing. You've been failing. The moment that you guys decided to take away the, the stu, the kids' center that was where Bertucci's used to be, and it used to be an all-glass building, and all the students would go swing by there after school, and y'all decided to sell that to Bertucci's, you failed. When you guys decided to bounce the Boys and Girls Club all over town to make it, every year, we had no idea where it was, you failed. When you fail to hire and support black teachers who are coming in to the point that they leave after two years, you're failing. You have failed the community of color in Amherst from the day it started, the day it was established. At any time you feel uncomfortable, it's pushback. It's, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna do it? But you know what? I guarantee if I do a little research, I can find programs that were run and, and offered to the town by white community members, and you guys have funded it with very little question, very little pushback. And it is very disappointing and it's very disgusting that you guys will sit there and think that you're doing something positive. But at the same time, find funds for this, that, and the other white spaces. And you, 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 you know, I, I know that makes some of you uncomfortable, white spaces. What do you mean, white spaces? I mean, I can't go into a store and, and guarantee that I'm going to see a black owner. And when they are here, they're here for such a short little period of time. You have to work on yourselves and what you do. Holding a sign, putting, putting Black Lives Matter up on, up on your front lawn means nothing. It's performative. Do some actual work. And it shouldn't even be the BIPOC community that has to explain to you and tell you over and over and over again how to do it. The information is out there. It needs to hurt. It needs to feel uncomfortable. Because if you don't feel uncomfortable, you, you're not learning a lesson. You're not understanding what's going on. Because every day I walk through life feeling uncomfortable. And the last thing I'm gonna say is another story. My son is now twenty-five, and when we had the forum for the CSWG, he, I had to, I had to convince him to speak. He didn't want to speak. And it broke my heart listening to him speak, because he was in the newspaper quite often for sports. He was a well-known and well-respected young man in this community. And he was detained because he looked like somebody who did something. On New Year's Eve, as he's walking to his girlfriend's house. And the situation escalated to the And the situation escalated to the point that another student who knew him from Amherst saw what was going on, was like, what's up? What are you doing? Like, there's no way that this person did this. They were ignored, and so they started going on Snapchat and Facebook and everything, reaching out to other students and being like, they're detaining Donovan. And from what I understand, there was like twenty-five kids out there ta- talking to this officers and being like, look, you have the wrong person. Twenty-five students. I question what would have happened if nobody had been there. I don't know. It scares me. Because everybody says it's not gonna happen in Amherst, but I've been here thirty years. My mom was very well-known in this community. I'm well-known in this community. And my son, who also is well-known in this community, was detained. So no, I don't trust the community of Amherst very much. I don't trust non-BIPOC people very much. You have given me plenty of reasons not to trust you. You don't, you don't make it. You don't make any space for us. And you make that clear with every one of these meetings that happens that we've attended, that you've attended of ours. You've made it very clear. We are not welcome. And so if you don't want us to continue to feel that way, and if you don't want us to continue to see you in that light, then you need to make some real change. Not comfortable change, real change. Thank you.
Thank you, Breanna. Do you have more?
Um, Russ, my comments were just to the slideshow. I did get a chance to look at it on my lunch break. Did you want to comment first?
I can. Um, well, I I do want to appreciate the amount of work uh that the town manager. Uh, and I know that the town council and finance committee do uh week in and week out. Uh, and I appreciate your attention to detail uh and the specificity of your questions tonight and those of you who supported the CREST program and the DEI director. You know, at the, you know, early in his comments, the town manager talked about we need to address the urgency for change. And I have to say that in your discussion tonight, I heard a concern for getting the right responder to each call. Uh, I heard a concern for relieving the police department of some calls that are really not their specialty. But I didn't really hear a sense of urgency about the fact that many, many BIPOC people in our community do not feel safe. Will not call the police when they need safety services. That's a public safety problem. And there needs to be a sense of urgency about dealing with that. I do want to pick at two specific issues um that I think need to be changed at a minimum uh in the town manager's proposal. The first is that the budget slide shows whole hiring the community responders for five months. Now, we've agreed that it's gonna take two months to train them. That means they're only gonna have three months left in the year to be uh doing their job. They're not really gonna go operational until April first. So when we're developing the budget for next year, we're gonna have no idea how this program works. So the start to the program needs to at least be moved a few months ahead. And I believe, you know, I've looked carefully. I I understand the, all the implementation questions. I've, you know, I've been an administrator. I've initiated new programs. I know what it takes. I don't think we should try to do it immediately, but we do need preparation time. Uh, but we can't wait until only five months left in the fiscal, in the fiscal year, or we won't have the information we want. And we won't have responded to the uh urgency for change. We won't have met the needs of our BIPOC community members. Secondly, I think when the town manager introduced his budget to you, with all due respect to Scott and Gabe and Ron, he did not tell you he was increasing the police department by two positions. But the truth of the matter is, the police department has been functioning with forty-four sworn officers for the whole second half of the fiscal year. And the budget he gave you and the budget that he still is holding to tonight has forty-six officers. This is not the time to be increasing the level of police service. This is not the time to be adding positions. Especially when the the goal is how do we shift positions to an alternative responder model. Doing, making that kind of shift is often really difficult because there's no way to do it without laying off people in the department you're reducing. You have a unique opportunity. There are four and probably five vacancies in the police department right now. You can make this shift this year without having to lay anybody off, without terminating any valued police officer. We need more, we need more community responder positions and we need them for more time. The mu- the money is right, sitting right there in the police budget. Now, the other thing about that is it also makes the problem smaller for FY twenty-three. You create a bunch more police positions, you're gonna have, you know, again, you're gonna not be able to find the money because the money is in the police department. So doing it now while there are vacancies is a real advantage. And finally, I know there's some concern about leaving the town short of service. Well, you know, the police chief has explained to us that he can't count on being able to hire somebody who's already been trained in the academy. And it takes eight to twelve months to train somebody if they have to go through the academy. I'm confident we can get CREST server responders up and working uh considerably faster than that. So if you want to relieve the police department, you want to make sure there's enough police coverage for police work, get CREST up and running in a sizable enough uh dimension uh that we do relieve the police department of the things that are really not police work. Uh, and we begin to respond to the CREST pro- to the to the needs of the BIPOC community. I think the positions and the money are there, uh, and I I think it's a realistic thing to have a more substantial start uh for FY twenty-two. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Um, so what I'm gonna do is uh just see if Paul has anything that he wants to say. After what we've uh just heard and uh was to offer the finance committee, then I'm gonna quickly explain how the finance committee has to proceed under the charter, and I think that will conclude the evening.
Excuse me, but Ms. Owen has not spoken yet. And she wants to speak, and I don't know if Tashina Bowman uh wants to speak again. Her hand.
No, I thi- I I was assuming that uh hands could usually lowered uh in meetings by Athena. I was keeping track.
Hi, Andy. I would actually, I still do have a lot of questions for Mr. Mr. Bockelman on the presentation that he showed you all. So I mean, because I wasn't able to join the initial discussion, I would like to ask them now if possible.
Paul, do you want to go ahead and have the questions first?
Yeah, of course. So I guess my first question, looking at that slideshow, is is the Community Safety Working Group staying together past September? Because I noticed in the planning that the bulk of the work is going to start in October. I think, again, it is critical that the CSWG be a part of the planning process and implementing whatever needs to be implemented as this program starts.
So, um, if I can, Andy, uh, so we, I'm eager to look at your next proposal on Part B of the proposal, which includes the development of a resident oversight committee of some sort. And so I wanted to see if that's in competition with what the CSWG is doing, or if that's a separate organization, separate group and has a different, separate mission. I think that CSWG's charge will ha- will be expired when you um uh deliver your next report. I did put in the presentation, I would invite members of, you know, I didn't want to presume that anybody would be able, we'd be willing or interested in participating, but I would invite members of the CSWG to work on the development of the program.
Okay, and my next question, um, there was a slide rep um on the BIPOC Cultural Center, and it said that this center needs to be evaluated by the DEI director. I was just wondering what you meant when you said evaluated, because I think one of the habitual problems that this town has is forums and surveys for BIPOC people to come forward and talk about issues they're experiencing in the community and nothing happening. And so many have happened in this last year. I'm just wondering what else needs to be evaluated for us to have a BIPOC Cultural Center.
Um, if I can, Andy, as, um, yeah, I don't really know the answer to that question. I I know that that's a major ask or request uh under, from the working group. I am not prepared to sort of evaluate that and and figure out how to fund something like that. You put together a budget on what it would take to operate it. So I just felt like it needed more time, and I did, there was just no time during this front, this, this, this budget-making process to address that.
Okay, I would have felt just a little bit more comfortable if it said that rather than being evaluated by the DEI director.
I understand that, yeah.
Um, and then I'm wondering about the Harvard School Program that you talked about. I'm wondering why we're not utilizing the Kahoots consulting that's available. You've referenced it in our charge, and they're a program that's been around for over thirty years now, and they've learned a lot, and they provide consulting for different towns. So I'm wondering why we're sort of a case trial for the Kennedy School, but we're not reaching out to Kahoots.
So, but, uh, and that would, that would certainly be an option, but Kahoots is a different model. It's a model that isn't being recommended by the working group. The working group is looking at an employee-based model. Kahoots is a contract model. And so I think if we want to move in the contract um realm instead of hiring employees, but we went to contract with a social service agency like Whitebird, then we would, it would make sense for us to consult with Kahoots.
Okay, and then my last question wa- was, what markers are you going to use if you've developed them yet um to assess the effectiveness of CREST? I'm really worried that because you're not fully funding it, it's not going to be as effective as the group is anticipating.
No, that's a, it's a great point, because I I don't think CREST can be evaluated totally in year one. It's just, I think, um, Russ and you, several members, just said it's not gonna be enough time to really even get the word out that you can call independent, uh, independent number. I don't know what the, what the markers would be. I think that's something that people would have to look into. I think, I think it's important to create a baseline data, which which has already sort of been done uh at a certain level. But also, so we can, I I don't know what the markers are, what, what is, what do, how do we measure whether people feel safe in their community? It might be, you know, how many calls were actually han- handled. Uh, it might be a call-based assessment, so I just, I don't have an opinion on that. And I think it would, I would leave it to the group to try and develop that.
Okay, and I would just ask going forward that when these implementation meetings are happening with the Chief of Police and other members of safety services that exist in Amherst, that CSWG members be present, because we have been studying this and we should be part of the conversation.
Yes, I think in in my proposal, I was gonna invite uh members from the CSWG to appear at the table for these discussions.
Thank you. Andy, I'm wondering if we would be able to bring Dr. Shabazz into the um.
Actually, uh, thank you for mentioning that, because I realized.
Well, she was the, she was the lead, the um, she represents the consultant group that we worked with who helped us create the budget. That's why I bring that up.
Yeah, I I wanted to actually uh say, um, we actually have public comment on the agenda, and it's required as a part of all regular meetings of the council and uh committees. So I did want to, um, so if anybody who's in the audience who would like to speak, uh, this, uh, Dr. Shabazz has her hand up already, and I will call in her first, um, as you suggested. But other people, and uh, I want to, uh, because it is getting uh late night, we need to 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 move this along. Please raise your hands, have an idea of the number of people, and I ask you to to limit your time. Athena, uh, we'll run the clock though, uh, for uh Dr. Shabazz, because she was a good, one of the consultants. Um, I'm not gonna um do the same thing. And I think that for other people, I'm gonna head it fast, so we limited to two minutes, but I'm not limiting Dr. Shabazz. So please bring her in the room first.
Hello. You all can hear me?
Yeah, hi.
Okay.
I can hear you.
Yes, so, so thank you, Andy, and uh thank you, Town Manager, for reconsidering the budget. Um, it still needs work as the CSWG have, of course, um, you know, uh, outlined. Um, I'd like to speak to two things, uh, because I think that the CSWG has done an excellent job of um engaging with you uh in terms of a a real critique of what has been presented tonight. Um, first is to speak to the DEI Director uh position and uh implementation of the CREST program redesigned by the Town Manager's LEAP. First off, uh, the research that the CSWG is pulling from and that, um, some of the research, of course, we did extensive research, but um, and the seven-gen uh MC group, we looked at um the 2020 Center for American Progress Report. Uh, hopefully you all have looked at that. It's the Community Responder Model Report, uh, subtitled How Cities Can Send the Right Responder to Every 911 Call. They uh look at LEAP, and they look at the Kahoots program. Um, I would really recommend that this Finance Committee and the Town Council uh and the Town Manager look at that report for some comparative um uh issues and points that could be helpful as you, again, assess whether LEAP is the appropriate program for Amherst, or is it Kahoots, or is it a customized uh type of program? That it, it sounds like that's where your heart is, looking at something more customized, but um, so I just recommend that. Also, I'm gonna agree with uh Alyssa Brewer and Pat D'Angelo's here about the issues regarding the DEI Director position. It is an absolutely vital part of the CSWG recommendation and is desperately needed for this community. It is not an abstract, good-feeling type of position. It is a position that uh needs to be funded by a professional DEI Director, someone who is trained and has a background and education to fill that position right away, to be able to plan, assess, and implement goals outlined not only by the Town Manager, but the work of the CSWG. It's, it's really disrespectful to just say we're gonna elevate a position whereby someone is a clerk or a position that, uh, you know, is in the town hall already. This is a, needs to be a newly created position. There are towns in the state of Massachusetts that are around our size that have dedicated DEI Directors, and it deserves to have someone with the masters at least, at the very least, or a doctorate to um to provide these needed skills and knowledges and step into this position. And that a DEI Director, someone that attends on all levels of community development, including the economy. So diverse people bring in these types of necessary skills. And what happens here is that racially, and I'm saying here in Amherst, racially, linguistically, and ethnically diverse persons arrive here for a short time, often for education, educational advancement, but choose not to stay because of the discomfort and sometimes hostile economic, cultural, and social climate. That is a fact. I just had a conversation with someone that graduated from UMass recently, and they are already looking to leave. To this end, I noticed the description of equity and diversity on the town website as of this week has expanded in the last week into two paragraphs. And if I search the town website as a potential visitor or someone moving into Amherst, I would still find the statement and the work on diversity anemic that's, that is uh showing on the town website. Um, it's assumed that a diversity equity inclusion director would not attend to or consider economic investment and innovation. This is untrue. The shortsightedness is a continual problem on the part of the town and the town council. Having all kinds of people will help us make better decisions. More diverse employers can bring people from all over the world to work and build in Amherst. When people move here, they must find an environment that not only welcomes everyone, but educated and skilled people need to feel that they are empowered in the places where they pay taxes and invest. A role of Chief Diversity Inclusion Officer or Director would advise the town on issues to provide resources for the school departments, business, staff programs, activities to promote inclusive excellence and welcoming environments for all. They would have a lead role in facilitating the development of strategies, strategies, people, a plan, policies and guidelines that advance understanding of diversity inclusion. policies and guidelines that advance understanding of diversity inclusion across hiring, business development, the workforce, the community in total. This would also mean a person that coordinates with individuals who are overseeing diversity inclusion efforts within individual divisions within the town, the boards, right? And commissions and develop new programs that encourage active engagement and activities that demonstrate the city's commitment to inclusion. This is not a part-time position and should not be given short shrift. A more diverse workforce and community is a more economically robust community, period. The last thing I want to speak to is that, you know, when we look at budgeting, one of the things to keep in mind, particularly with the Kahoots Program as a model. Our research found that Eugene, Oregon saved an estimated eight point five million per year in public safety costs by reducing, reducing the need for police response. And the savings accrued in a town like Amherst would be able to reinvest those funds back into the responders program to expand its reach and promote it in a sustainable way. So again, the Center for American Progress Report also has this information. Lastly, Amherst is going to need to tailor the program that the Town Manager, the CSWG, has created. And it points to fit like for a local context and it must effectively meet the needs of the residents. We've said that. But what that means is that the town should meaningfully involve the community. That's the CSWG. Other oversight groups as far as a review group, et cetera, fine, but the CSWG needs to remain to engage residents in every step of the process as we will be back to square one where the people and the groups who are disenfranchised will most likely have to come into contact with police or in this case, community responders that do not necessarily fit what the CSWG had in mind. Okay? So the CSWG will be your best representatives of the larger community, especially regarding BIPOC members and should be maintained as a part of the process and an ongoing part of the town government to elicit feedback if you want to think of it as that way. Who are our people that can provide this, this liaison relationship with the community and with the program? Okay, so I think we have to remember who are the stakeholders. The CSWG has brought the information of folks most vulnerable and who would most benefit. And why on earth would you exclude them from shaping this process unless you want to repeat the same mistakes? That's it. Thank you so much.
So Paul, I will leave it to you to raise your hand at any point or to signal to me because I'm looking right now at the attendee list. And I said we need to do public comment. Please, please limit to two minutes for public comment.
I'm not sure if you heard her comment, but Ms. Walker has had her hand up for quite a while. So I just want to acknowledge that her hand has been raised.
And I also have my hand up.
Yeah. The I need to draw the meeting to a close at some point. So I just have to be very careful about making sure we get the public comment. And that's why I was trying to move over to allow the public in for a few minutes.
I'm okay continuing public.
But go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Walker.
No, I'm okay with continuing public comment, but I would just like to speak because I did have questions and I have had my hand raised since before we started public comment. And so I do have questions for the Town Manager in regards to his presentation, but I can wait until after public comment.
Okay. And I see that Ms. Farah has too. And I'll conclude with comment, just to remind you about what the role of the Finance Committee and the Council is under the Charter, but I'll do that at the end. Going to public comment, the first is a, and I'm not going to, Ms. Karakashian, I believe is the last name. And I'm not going to try, let you introduce yourself so I don't mispronounce your, your name entirely.
Hi there. My name is Noelle Lonnie. I would like to start off by saying, one of the issues that I had in Amherst is that folks never actually tried to pronounce my name correctly. So that feels pretty offensive that you just said you're not going to try. I would also like to point out that as an outside member, I don't live in Amherst anymore. So I want to make that very clear. I just sat waiting to speak for two and a half hours because this matters to me as a person who doesn't live there anymore. I feel like what was made very clear by, I believe y'all are the council now, is that y'all are not invested in actually making change in Amherst because y'all didn't invite the people who proposed the budget, who built the programs, who are making these recommendations to speak, to present what they have been working on for months. And that's incredibly disrespectful and Tashina named it and racist. So I feel like what y'all are showing is that you're not actually committed to making any change. And if that is not the case, if you are actually interested and creating a community where your BIPOC members feel safe, then the first thing you need to do is invite them to, to invite them to sit at the table. And it is wildly inappropriate as it is wildly inappropriate that watching this meeting, I see, I don't see any diversity. Like the first step should have been inviting people of color to join the council, period. Because y'all are speaking on stuff that you don't live, that you don't know, and then are interpreting it for outsiders, for, for members of the community, for people who are like listening to this in a way that is made very clear by this group that is inaccurate. You're like inaccurately reciting the work that they have done and not including them to clarify and answer questions. And even like ask questions about the information that you're interpreting. And I'm really disappointed to have sat here and like realize that nothing has changed since I left, since I moved away. And so I would really like y'all to sit with that and I expect y'all to just do better. Because if that's what you want, then you actually need to take the strides forward. And I don't know if the time is up, but the last thing I want to say that I felt very hurt by is that y'all are talking about having a budget to increase the police when that is literally the exact opposite. Like I expect to see that decrease when this group is providing alternatives to the police. The expectation is that the problems that they can't solve, which they should be trained on irregardless, they should be able to step into a situation and say, this is out of our realm. Let's hand it off to the appropriate person, which it sounds like they're not. Those positions need to be decreased so the money is going to the appropriate places. And yeah, that's all I have to say. I commend, I commend all of you on this committee for putting this together and being patient while you're being wildly disrespected. Like kudos to y'all, like kudos. And I want to make it very clear that I don't, I don't even live in Massachusetts anymore. And I found it important to hop on this call to defend folks who aren't being defended by the people who are claiming they support BIPOC folks in this community.
Thank you. And I was very interested in your comment and appreciated your comment at the beginning because I don't know if it's more disrespectful to attempt a name and get it wrong or to not attempt the name at all. And so thank you for that comment. Somebody who signed in is Canopy Equity. Please state your name, where you live, because I don't know what that is, but I see your hand up.
Hi, my name is Amara Donovan and I grew up in Amherst for twenty-eight years. And also attended the University of Massachusetts Amherst with a dual degree in sociology and public health with a focus on racial equity. And I now work in anti-racism and racial justice, both in a community engagement nonprofit and in anti-racism consulting. And I urge the Town Council and Finance Committee to adopt all of the recommendations formed by the CSWG after countless hours of community engagement, synthesis, and meaningful discussion about our community. The CRES program is a huge and impactful part of this that will revolutionize the experiences of BIPOC and other historically marginalized groups in our community. The foundation of a thriving community is trust and safety. The CRES program provides a foundation for that and begins the work of restoration with a community that has experienced immense harm at the hands of policing in Amherst specifically. I was incredibly distraught to see the clear lack of respect and investment in the CSWG made clear throughout their entire work from being publicly chastised by a Town Council member, lied to about funding, asked not to attend essential meetings such as the safety portion of the budget meeting, barred from presenting the information they deem important as BIPOC community members themselves, and now being met with barriers to making the fruits of their labor come to fruition. This is racism. If Amherst truly wants to be a diverse and inclusive community rooted in equity and anti-racism, this must be reflected in the dollars we choose to invest and the holistic view of programs, services, and resources we invest in. Anti-racism cannot be an add-on. It must be integrated throughout the town, safety services, mental health services, and governance across the board. This is a start, but this is not enough. I urge you to defund the police and invest in the BIPOC community immediately and with urgency. Additionally, I would just like to say that the members of the CSWG are community safety and wellness. Your constant questioning of their data and asking the town to collect even more information before investment is a racist, white supremacist strategy. No one asks white people to go gather more data and information and to prove themselves after years of this data being available to the town. This data is right in front of your faces and it is so disrespectful for you to say that it's not enough. BIPOC residents are not obligated to tie their data in a bow of your white supremacist perfectionist standards. Stories are data. Your response is not enough. Again, the members of the CSWG are community safety and wellness. My doula, who made sure my son was born safe and healthy, is on this committee. My advocate in education and in all of my life across the board as a resource is on this committee. The woman and business owner who served me and my friends' food after school from her business is on this committee. That is community safety and wellness. Y'all really need to pull out your notebooks and start taking notes. Pull out the tablet, pull out whatever privileged device you have and take notes and be active participants in this work. It is your job and how you are elected and we will vote you out. The CSWG, you all are incredible. Continue to stand in your power and continue to take up space because you and our community deserve this and you should not allow this meeting to be cut short. I have seen this Town Council stay on meetings because of buildings and because of mosquito spraying longer than you are willing to hear BIPOC community members out. And I think that you are fearful and I think that it is cowardly of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Hi, my name's Allegra Clark. I live in Amherst, District Two. I am disgusted but not surprised that the Community Safety Working Group was not included in presenting the plan for CRES. And, you know, I think we need to do better as a town. We've asked countless times for BIPOC people to share their stories and we're not listening to them. And this was just another example throughout this process of how we haven't listened or haven't even given the space to be heard. I, I know I've said this before, but I think if there are vacancies in the police department right now, those need to be transitioned. Those positions need to transition over to the CRES program. And every time a vacancy is coming up in the next few years, that should be transitioned over to the CRES program. If, if we are going to follow the recommendation to reduce the number of policing and to increase the services provided by CRES and look at the kinds of calls that they are responding to, that's how we need to do it. I do want to just share some research and some data since it does seem that sometimes that does get through. Recently, I was on a webinar by the National Academy of Sciences, Engineering, and Medicine. And a doctor, Rhea Boyd, out of the Children's Hospital in Oakland, shared her research on policing and its impacts. She said that the harms associated with police exposure to black and brown children begin in utero with mothers who live in neighborhoods with high level of police presence having a higher risk of pre-charm birth. Additionally, there are educational outcomes of black and Latino students who live in close proximity to police killings, police surveillance of their neighborhood, and violence by the police in general. This exposure increases absenteeism, decreases GPA, and decreases the likelihood of graduation. Her recommendations include reducing children's exposure to police and police violence, including using non-police responders for 911 calls, shrinking the police footprint and diverting resources into healthcare infrastructure. So I think that also shows that not only is CRES important, but the other recommendations of having a youth empowerment center and a BIPOC cultural center are also important to create community safety.
Thank you, Zoe.
Hello, my name is Zoe Krachner. I live in District Five. And I had a couple of questions that came up during Professor, sorry, been a long day. Town Manager Bachmann's presentation earlier today. And one of them, or several of them have already been pointed out. The first is that I noticed on the slides that the CSWG is not mentioned at all after the, in the, the month-by-month plan is not mentioned at all after the August row, which was very concerning to me. Because I know that one of the things that they have specifically requested is that they are, that they will be continued so that they can continue helping implement this program. So I hear Town Manager Bachmann that you have said that you've invited people and you don't expect that, you don't want to expect that they will necessarily stay on. But it was very concerning to me to see that they weren't even mentioned after August. Because they really specifically have been requested for them to continue. Secondly, as Russ Vernon Jones pointed out, at this point in the plan that Bachmann put forward, it seems like CRES will only be really active for a couple of months before a budget decision will be made. And I know that right now, it sounds like you're like, you know, making promises about how we're going to continue funding it, even we'll figure out what the benchmarks are and we'll figure, you know, we won't be judging it too harshly. But I really don't trust that when push comes to shove next year and you're making hard budget decisions, that you will look at something that you haven't really given a chance to succeed and have quality data that you, because you care so much about all this data that we've been giving you for over a year and you're still barely listening. But you will look at this thing that hasn't gotten the chance to have the full level of data that you think is required. And it's hard for me to imagine that you will then double the budget because it will need to be around for a whole year instead of half a year. Let alone increase the number of staff beyond what you've currently allocated for. It's very concerning to me. And thirdly, as other people have pointed out as well, there's no mention of any additional police officer positions being frozen. There's the two that were frozen by the Town Council last year, which there's been no discussion about necessarily whether they will continue to be frozen because the hundred and thirty thousand dollars that was originally promised was from what wasn't spent last year. So that is still, I think, an unanswered question for me. And as people have mentioned, there are additional police positions that are open beyond that, which sounds like maybe four or five. It's a lot of money and it should be going to CRES. There's no reason that we should be continuing to increase the police budget, which is currently increasing this year by a couple percent. Although maybe slightly not now that you've taken out the extra money you didn't even know was in the educational budget for the police. In any case, it should not be increasing when you are intentionally shifting away from police department towards a community responder model, which is specifically what you requested that the CSWG do. Thank you.
Thank you. I need to keep going because this is getting like Meg.
Did you say Meg?
Yes, I did. And you're there.
Hi, thank you. I'm sort of paralyzed by the important comments that have been made. I appreciate Tashina's remarks. Hi, Tash. And I appreciated Paul's remarks. I really, I had another set of comments I was going to make in support of the Community Safety Working Group, which I still have great support for. I just urge everyone to be gentle. I just urge everyone to be gentle and to try to find some level of trust that everybody's doing their best. As a white person, I've learned that my experiences in Amherst are not the same experiences that people of color have had. It's a fact. It's just a plain fact that if you're a white person, you haven't had the same experiences living in this town. And we need those of us who are white need to accept that and understand it and explore what we can do to change that. And I'm really sort of, I'm not going to say too much because I had, I was going to say a whole lot more, but I'm really been totally drawn in by this conversation and just urge every, all of us to be patient and to be listening and to try to care about each other as human beings and not be defensive. As white people, our experiences have been profoundly different, and it's just a fact. And so we need to support the recommendations of the Community Safety Working Group. And at the same time, we need to make sure that they'll work in the context of the town government. And I really appreciated Paul's remarks because he seemed to be putting forward a way that this could move, that we could implement much of what the working group is recommending. But I really urge people, if you have this little gut feeling of reaction like, ugh, white people, like, ooh, what do they mean? They don't understand, you know, this is a little gut reaction that some white people can have when they hear people of color talking about their experiences. Don't go there. Just when those, when white people have those experience, those feelings of resentment and just let it go. Let it go. That wasn't what I was planning to say. Oh, well, but I'm totally in support of the community support. Oops, I got my earplugs. I'm in support of the recommendations, and I'm delighted to hear about this LEAP program because this is a real, I'll say one more thing that I was going to say, this is a real opportunity for Amherst to move forward. And I appreciate that Paul's been linked in with this group. Don't think of it as Harvard. Think of it as a network of other communities around the country that are trying to do the same work. That the it's not Harvard, it's a network of communities and we have, we can learn from other communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm going to make two comments here. One is on behalf of the Human Rights Commission, the other on behalf of myself. So I want to say that the Human Rights Commission is in full support of the Community Safety Working Group's recommendations and that we advocate for these recommendations to be fully funded. Personally, as a resident, I'd like to commend the CSWG members for their hard work. But I'd also like to honor the Black indigenous and people of color on the working group for the courage that it takes to speak truth to power as a BIPOC person in the town of Amherst. It's a lot easier to get placated than it is to be heard. So you have my respect, my support, and I honor you. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty?
Hello, I'm Marcy. And I, like Meg, have been feeling very moved by this process. I want to just say that in the beginning of the meeting and Paul's presentation, I was very excited at how enthusiastic Paul was and how he had worked really hard to bring money to the table to have at work. And then when the Community Safety Working Group folks entered the room, I was quite surprised at how frustrated they were. And I realized, my gosh, two hours went by and here they were waiting, not, not being part of this and not having that opportunity to just look at the screen, for me to look at the screen and not see their faces in hindsight was really, really intense. So I appreciate them coming in and sharing that emotion and that experience that they had. And it really taught me something. As a white person, I am always learning. I'm always learning the ways that my intentions are good, but I don't always, you know, do the right thing, and I can fall short very easily in terms of just the simple act of having everybody at the table. That, that makes perfect sense to me now, but I didn't think of it in the beginning when the presentation was happening. To get back to the content, I really applaud what Lynn said and the enthusiasm with which Lynn's talked about the grant writing and the potentiality of helping to support some of these efforts with grants. And I know that the Community Safety Working Group has done a lot of research about grants and that they had some stuff to offer on that, on that front. And I'm really, I was happy to hear Lynn talk about that. I also, I don't know who spoke of it, but there was some question about cross-training and trying to save money by having it be both police and CREST. And I just, at that moment, actually, I was aware that there was nobody from the Community Safety Working Group to speak to that because I know that is absolutely antithesis to what they have been saying is so important that it be separated from the police and that the people in town who are BIPOC people do not trust the, the police as, as their safety network, as their safety resource. And finally, I agree with Meg. You know, we, we have so much to learn and culturally, I think, white people often don't like being yelled at and get, get that utchy feeling that Meg discussed in, in the belly of like, whoa, I'm, I'm being attacked here. But we all, we all need to learn some stuff. And hearing people share such raw emotion brings to me a very big feeling of respect for them and and a lot of appreciation. And the Community Safety Working Group, the meetings that I have had the honor to attend and to look at after the fact, I just really have, again, talking about process, really appreciated their process, their professionalism, their own, the combination of their smarts and their ability to research and find things out and also their humanness and their, their humanity and their sharing of their experiences. So I'll close now, but I really am grateful to have a chance to say something, and I fully support the Community Safety Working Group. Thank you.
Two more public comments, so we'll come back to the working group for a few minutes.
Hello, this is Nadine. I'm District Four. I'm just, I just wanted to come on first to just say that the CSWG group, the work that they've been doing, I want to commend them also to say I appreciate their hard work. I have been a resident of Amherst for over 27 years. And I want to say, I'm just going to come from a legal perspective to simply state that, as we had seen in this past year, one of the things that I think that when we're looking at budgeting and we're looking for future is that it will cost more if we find, the town of Amherst finds itself in a predicament like Minneapolis did or even, or even Louisville, Kentucky, what happened with Breonna Taylor. When we start paying out legal fees, when we start paying out money, it's cheaper in the long run to invest in a community service group that will help eliminate or lessen the chances of there be some sort of police brutality and in addition for someone to be dead, no respect for someone's life. So I would say to the, as I know we're looking right now at the budgets and the numbers, but we also have to be looking at as a cost-benefit analysis. And if there is a community service program available, as you know, that there's an insurance that you pay for that cost, and then it's lessened because you have this and you show that this is the work that you're doing. So that helps with the lesson of the cost, and if there's some sort of payout in the future, we at least are prepared and we show that we are, we're being proactive instead of reactive, which is what all these other jurisdictions have been. And so that I would say that in order to provide some sort of extra comfort level because there has to be a level of trust for the BIPOC community and a place for them to feel very open, that they're heard, and that there's possibility for them. I also have a, now a young adult, raised a young child in Amherst, and I had to have the same talks that Ms. Ferrera had to have every time he drove or every time he went out, even he went out with his friends. And still to this day, I still have that conversation with him while he's at school in Chicago. And so just wanting to say that it is important and that we want as residents in Amherst to be heard and to have a voice and for us to have seats at tables. So, thank you.
Nadine, thank you for your comments. Andy evidently lost connection and let me know that. Ash Hartwell, please enter the room.
Thank you. This will be brief, but I just wanted to, again, say that how impressive the research and the thoughtfulness and the work that the Community Safety Working Group has put together. And that, really to commend that and to recognize, I, I feel that we should have a certain level of optimism that things are at a cost and could change. But we have to do it together. We have to do it together. By that, I mean the white folk and the BIPOC folk working together. And although I really respect all the work that Paul put into that, I think that what is clear unless there is integration and involvement of the dialogue with the, with the groups, it, it, no matter how technically good it may be, it's not good because those voices aren't there. And, and that's the message of tonight, if any message comes through really clearly. And I would argue that what our goal must be is to establish the trust and the consensus about the way to move forward. That's tough. It's going to take, you know, work on both sides, but it has to happen. If we're going to move forward and really make a structural change in this town, and we could do it. Everybody here is, is smart and able, but let's recognize it has to be done together or it's not going to happen. So that's really what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ash. Meg, did you still have your hand up again? Or did, are you taking your hand?
No, I forgot to put it down. Sorry.
Okay, Andy, go ahead.
Yeah. I think we were just going to, Alicia asked, I believe, to speak after public comment and ask questions, Paul. And I see one other hand up and then wanted to see to how we, to draw this to a close. I did have one comment to make, and it's not, it's not meant to say that the comments we heard from the public weren't very important and we weren't listening to them. But we had heard a substantial presentation at the council meeting. And the goal was today to then hear from the town manager and to react to that because we had, and that may have been poorly thought out, but that was the intention. Alicia, Brianna, do either one of you want to ask questions?
Andy, there's one more person.
Vera Cage is waiting to speak in public comment.
See. Okay, I'm sorry, Vera, why don't you conclude? You would, please come in.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay. I speak in total support of the CSWG's proposal. The town needs to fund it 100%. I want to read a portion of your resolution in the aftermath of the death of Mr. George Floyd last year. You said, whereas, as public officials, it is our duty to use our legal and moral authority to protect all members of our community, no matter their race or color or where they fall in the power spectrum. It is our duty to foster a community free of fear, intimidation, and violence. A community in which people are not targeted or hurt unnecessarily by law enforcement and provide equal protection under the law. You speak in this resolution about listening and putting groups together. And the CSWG is a group that is very much people of color-centric and women-centric. And for anyone to vote against funding this 100%, you are not true to the letter of your, to, to the, to the language of your letter. What we need to hear from public officials who have the power is that you've not wasted people's time. My son is in the CSWG group. And what lesson is he going to learn about participating and community engagement when his elders are sitting at the table, carving out a space for him to belong, to participate, to use his experiences as a Black, a Brown child growing up in this community? All the, the, this is all the community that he knows growing up. What lesson are you imparting upon him about white supremacy and who holds power in this community? Dare not, dare not exclude the CSWG's work. Do not disrespect it. Please vote accordingly, that you listen and you respect people's voices that have volunteered their time here. Thank you.
Thank you. So then going back to Alicia, Brianna, as co-chairs of the committee, do you have questions? Posing to pose to Paul and then
I also have my hand up. I've been having my hand up for a while.
Yeah, I know, but I was, I, I did see it. And again, I think we've getting to the point of exceeding our time. I see more hands going up and it's getting to be problematic. I did, did see your hand up before, but I wanted to go to the co-chairs.
I want to defer my comment to Ms. Ferrera and Ms. Walker, who have had their hands up for a while now.
Thank you, Ms. Ellen. So I just wanted to, I have a couple of comments and questions on Mr. Bachmann's presentation. I am thankful that he went back and did reassess his budget allocation to us. However, it is still very insufficient. And so there are a couple of things that are really concerning to me when seeing this. The first thing is the implementation team. And so I am just very confused as to, we actually set out parameters for an implementation team and who we wanted to be involved in the design process. And they're not on here. And it says the CSWG members will be a part of the implementation process. However, it was also very clear to me at the beginning of this meeting that there have been multiple conversations in regards to our recommendations that we have not been a part of. And sort of the entire coming up with this presentation was, it seemed like there was discussion amongst the implementation team, and none of us were part of that conversation, but none of us were also even aware that that conversation was happening. And so that's very concerning to me considering that Mr. Bachmann sits in all of our meetings and we could have been made aware that this was happening, and I'm sure that if we were made aware, we would have, we would have expressed our desire to continue to be involved and for our voices to be heard as a part of that process. So that's very concerning to me, the implementation team itself. And then also a lot of these slides and a lot of the questions that are open or left to, left that Mr. Bachmann has stated in these slides, he doesn't have the answers to, are things that we have already researched. And so I'm just also a little bit slightly confused as to, there was a lot of question as And so I'm just also a little bit slightly confused as to there was a lot of question as to the money that we spent on our consulting team. Well, a lot of money has been put into the research and it is there and it is available. And uh if certain things needed to be configured in order for the um youth center to be implemented implemented or for the um the cult the multicultural family center to be implemented, then those things could have been brought up during our meetings because it has been a long part of the discussion that these were things we were going to recommend. And I feel like what it would really look like for this to be a collaborative, inclusive process would be since the town manager was sitting in all of our meetings for him to say, hey, for us to be able to make this happen, this is the information we're going to need. And we have asked him also many times for that information to be given to us and we weren't received that feedback. So it's a little bit weird that, you know, there needs to be more more research put into how we can make the youth center or the family center effective, but we've we've done that research. That's what we've been doing for the past six months is the research. So it feels to me like we're being we're being asked for more time, but I'm not understanding why, like is the research just gonna be done over again? And by who? And where is that money gonna come from? Since we've already spent the money on it and the question here is money and and the lack thereof funding. Um and then I also see that 80K was put aside to address anti-racism. That's the same 80K that was put aside this year that we utilized in order to complete our charge. And I just want to say that that was not enough. We ran out of money. So we have a second half of our charge and we already don't have any money left. So I'm just not understanding how that 80K is going to be used successfully to address any anti-racism. And it was also put that that possibly that 80K could be used for the stipends for the um the oversight board. But um and that possibly it could be used to help um come up with more information to implement these other programs. But how is that going to happen when that wasn't even enough money for us to do the research? I'm not understanding. Um it's this is just not gonna work out. And then my final point was that when we came up with the alternative for community safety, all of our recommendations are equally as important. So crest would be the the um responding to crime, you know, like responding to the calls to the police. But we need preventative services in order to really lessen the 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 calls that go to the police. We need the youth to be able to be engaged. We need them to have other activities to participate in. We need to really foster their development and their growth because there aren't a lot of opportunities available in this town to the youth period. Any youth. It is not avail available here. And so what is it? What is what can they do? We heard at one of our families, at one of our forums, one of the positive experiences that were shared with the police was that there was a mother having um difficulties with her child and she was able to call the police and the police responded. They were able to get her child back into the home and things were were settled. And to me, although that illustrates a a positive police experience, what it really illustrates is the lack of resources available to families in this community. There was nobody else for her to call. There was nowhere else for her to go. It wasn't because this was the best option. It was because it was the only option. And we need to give our community members more options, not just the crest program. We need the multicultural center. We need the youth center. And we need a whole entire department for diversity, equity, inclusion, because that is a large, heavy and weighted task. And there are so many different departments in this town that need to be evaluated under an anti-racist lens that one person themselves cannot do that. That is a very large task. And and I I was disappointed. This is an action plan that we've been asking for for a few weeks from the town manager. We have asked him to come up with a detailed action plan. And to me, this is not detailed. This doesn't state anything. Doesn't this doesn't state how the budget is going to increase year by year in order to fill fulfill these things. This doesn't it. It's just a very loose plan to me. And so I'm very concerned about the implementation of our recommendations moving forward, especially if our group has not continued to be involved in the process.
I don't know if Paul wants to respond or why don't we hear from Deborah first and then I'm gonna ask Paul to see if he has any uh comments to make.
Um, I mean, again, you know, I I keep on hearing like we need to 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 shut down this meeting and everything. And and you all have had so many meetings that you go on and on and on. This is a critical, important meeting. I don't want to hear again that we need to shut down this meeting. I have two kids that I that that need me, but I'm here. Why? Because they understand that I'm trying to safeguard their life. I'm trying to safeguard that they don't get harmed. You think I want to be here at nine oh seven talking to you all? No, I don't. But I'm here because I think it's critically important. And so you all should also feel that it's critically important. We're talking about a whole segment of of the population of Amherst. And and that's why I think you you all are not getting that we keep on having to say the same things over and over again because it seems like you all are not getting it. You keep on bringing up the things over and over again. It it it's just alarming to me. It's really alarming that this is what we're we're having to do to bring up these issues. You know, uh, one of the one of the residents said that, you know, we're at a cost. You all have to take bold moves. You need to, you know, take the steps that's needed, be brave. Things when you charged us, you wanted us to create something different. If not, then you should have told us to create the same thing. No, it's different. I know it's scary. I know difference means scary, right? That's why BIPOC people always get it because we're different. But we need to be, you know, we need to be brave. We need to take bold steps. And it can't just be, right? That resolution, the beautiful resolution you all you all created, that's talk. What we're doing, what we're what we recommend in terms of all our recommendations, that's doing the walk, right? Can't be just talking. Can't be just writing a beautiful resolution with a whole bunch of words. Has to be about putting them into fruition. I understand it's scary, but we have to be able to do it. And now in terms of my three quick points, because I I do have three quick points to make, right? And this is to Paul Bauchaman. So Paul, when Brianna asked you about uh cahoots, why aren't you aren't you uh using cahoots as one of the places to 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 look at? And then you said it's because they have a con they they use contracts and we're using employee. I get it, but that's a narrow segment. Cahucho has been in place for over thirty years. They've done a lot of good things, but it also made a lot of mistakes. So they'd be willing to tell us the mistakes they made so that we don't make those mistakes, right? So we can't just just because they're contractor model and we're an employee model, now cahoots is out the window. No, you still have to go and consult with them. Because it's important because they've been doing this thing for thirty years and 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 with a lot of success. One of the one of the um, you know, markers that they threw out there is that last year with twenty four thousand calls, they only had to call the police in for a hundred and fifty of those calls. Because obviously they're huge, right? It's it's Eugene and Springfield. They're huge. There's a lot of people in in their in their cities. I get that. But out of twenty four thousand calls last year, they only had to call in the police for a hundred and fifty. Let me let that sink in. So yes, consult with cahoots. I think it would be a good idea. Don't just throw them out just because they use a it's a contract tomorrow. I'm like, I I just don't get it. And then um and then the CSWG, I said it when I when I said it in the beginning. And and Paul, you're being very kind of like general, not trying to really focus in. CSWG has to be part of putting these recommendations in place. They cannot expire on on September first. CSWG has nothing to do with the oversight board. The oversight board, the resident oversight board is totally different, has a whole different set of parameters. So for you to say that, well, you're not sure because, you know, maybe the CDSWG and the oversight board is gonna be the same. No. Oversight board is gonna be over overseeing and monitoring the police department, Amherst Police Department and Crest, right? We are going to be monitoring the recommendation, making sure the recommendations are put in place, however long that takes. We have to be involved at every step of the way, period. So I I mean, I hope I'm making myself clear because I've said it before, but then you answer some questions again, very, you know, uh, general and not really committing to anything. And then lastly, I didn't hear from my question, uh, you know, to you, Paul, about the fact that once press is fully and it has to be because, right? If we're not, if we don't put a put it fully in place, what it's gonna do is it's gonna fail, right? So hopefully, once it put fo- fully in place and it's successful, that means there's gonna be less police. So if there's gonna be less police, that funding is gonna go to Crest, correct? I want a response. I didn't hear that response. What is the response? I stopped there.
Okay, thank you. Uh so I don't know, Paul. Not sure. He's looking frozen on my screen. That's I'm not sure.
Like, okay, am I being heard? Okay. So I I I think looks like Andy may be frozen. Um so on the cahoots model, I'm happy to look at the cahoots. It is the gold. It's the standard that everyone looks at. It's the longest tenure. I wasn't dismissing it. I was just saying, uh, you know, the LEAP uh consulting group, they they consult. It's a it leap is not a program. It's a group that advises folks on programs. Because Hoots is an actual program as in Albuquerque, Olympia, you know, all the different places. So I think we would want to look at all the programs. Cahoots is obviously has a ton of experience and we'd want to learn from that. The the reason it is a different model than what the working group has recommended. Uh but there are other things and it's a co so it's a so it's a it's a um but something to learn from for sure. The um you know, I I think there the 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 mission of the concern is uh community safety working group was to bri- provide advice to the town manager. That's what the mission was. The that mission had will be completed when you're you deliver the part B recommendations to the town manager. Then it becomes the town manager's responsibility to provide a budget to the town to the town council. And it's only saying so and I've done that. So now the ball is in the town council's court to decide if they're gonna approve that budget or not. Your charge for the working group goes till September first. And you know, the intent, the reason I put September first in your charge was that knowing that your final report was due on June thirtieth, that you would be need some time if there's reaction, if the council wanted to meet with you during the summer, if there were things that needed to be cleaned up. It was never the intention for the working group to be a continuing body, and that's not my intention. There may be a body that needs to be continued, and that's why I want to talk about the reparations group. But the continuing body is not going is not set up to be the community safety working group. If you look at the charge, it is a time limited charge. It was set up purposely that way. And I think we, well, I'm not sure if we talked about that or not at the beginning, but um we the commitment when we asked people to participate was that it was to September first, and that's what was written into the charge. So and um and if it and putting Crest in place fully in place, um you know, I I hear that and I I understand that concern that unless it's up and running full fledged, it's really hard to judge whether it's successful or not. And I think that that comes into play with whether the phone number is actually being utilized or not, if there's a separate phone number, for instance. And it it comes into play if um, you know, you know, if if it's only, you know, it if it's not open all the time, people can't trust that they can call it when they're they're not sure. And that that creates some uncertainty. And but I I really believe that we need to start with a smaller program, even though it's not up and running to ultimately get there. I really truly believe that in an alternative responder program, especially in this community, is well needed and needs to be put into place. And I think I don't think any programs that have been that have any of these community responder programs that have started have ever been terminated. They've all proven their worth pretty quickly. So I think that this will be the case in our community too, because uh our community is really ripe for this kind of um program. And I think um what is the impact on the police department was one of the things is and I think, you know, it we we want to model that too. We want to look at what the one of my present things was to say, what is the appropriate level for police department? What is the appropriate level for for the Crest program? And we need to be looking at that objectively and with statistics so that we're building the right community safety model for the community of Amherst.
Thank you, Paul. So maybe this is a good a good segue for me to say what I was gonna say about the process and then uh recognize a few more members of the uh working group uh before drawing it to the close. The finance committee is required by the charter to make a recommendation on the budget to the council. Ultimately, it is a council decision is to um how to respond. But the council is limited by what the charter provides as the council's capacity within the budget. And this was not created by our charter commission just for Amherst, but is actually a part of state statute that applies to all cities across the Commonwealth. And that is that the council can approve a budget, can um reduce a funding line, can eliminate a funding line, but cannot add to a funding line. And that's what the charter says and that's what state law says. So when the council ultimately has to act before June thirtieth, it is within those limitations that it has to act. And I know that that's not a something that makes um many of us always happy, but it is what the law is. And uh that's kind of where we're at. But I do at least want to uh get back to the co-chairs of the group and then other members of the group. So uh Brianna, do you want to lead off or?
Sure. So my comment was just, I recognize that our charge was to put together these um reports. But I also want to remind you that part of our charge was engaging the communities most impacted by policing. And we have engaged them through hours of forums, surveys, and the consultants work. And those stories are horrifying and I would never want somebody to relive them. So I think Paul, just on you sitting in on those meetings and hearing those lived experiences, you would want to keep us together to make sure that our recommendations are seen all the way out because there's a clear lack of mistrust between BIPOC community members and the town government. So I think it's critical that the CSWG stays together. And I also just want to emphasize that this conversation could have been a lot shorter if we were welcome to the beginning of the conversation as planned. This whole the whole finance committee meeting was supposed to be catered toward the Community Safety Working Group. We attended the community um the Community Safety Finance Committee in the audience. And we listened to the um the chief talk, the APD chief talk. We listened to Fireman Nelson talk. But now it's our turn to present and we're in the audience, hearing others talk about something that we've spent months researching and months getting feedback from the community to inform our work. So that's why this meeting is dragging out because you left us in the audience in the beginning. And we are now evaluating the PowerPoint that was said. We're trying to answer questions that others have that were answered incorrectly and we're trying to provide clarity and also speak to the amount of um people that joined us during public comment and said, what's what we have now in Amherst is not working. It is not working.
Thanks, Brianna. Um and uh sticking with the two coaches for solution, do you have anything else?
Um, yes, thank you. So Brianna stated uh very well what I was going to say for the most part. But I just wanted to um clarify that our charge was actually very specifically to make recommendations to alternative safety to to alternative safety services. Things that are being done by the police right now that can be outsourced to other agencies, to other departments. That was specifically our charge was to make the those recommendations. And so you have them. And one of the recommendations that we made was to continue the CSWG. And so although I hear that you say that it was intentional that our group was ending, um it is also intentional that we're requesting for it to not end. And so I think that you have the power to amend that decision um at this time because that is one of our recommendations. Um, I also and and I also am just curious as to what the intention was, like, why was it intentional that we're ending? Um, I I don't really understand that intention. And then I also heard the town manager state that he believes that a pilot is what we need. And I'm also very confused about that because once again, we have done the research and so we are the experts on this. And we have stated very clearly that we do not believe that a pilot is going to be successful and we do not believe that it's going to work. And so so I just don't understand what research that belief is based out based off of or or where you come up with those findings. And and I'm I'm just really frustrated right now. And I apologize that I'm trying to to work through this because we've been told a lot of misleading information. And and once again, I thought this meeting was entirely for us. We actually took a doodle poll onto which day this meeting should be on that was best for all of the Community Safety Working Group members. We were instructed not to go to the first um portion of the budget hearing with the finance committee because we were going to be given a meeting specifically for us. We are being silenced. We are being being limited and our voices are being reduced. And it's it's very difficult. Like I I also agree with Deborah. I don't I don't want to Like I also agree with Deborah, I don't, I don't want to be on this meeting so late, but I've had questions and things I wanted to say the entire first portion of the meeting. And I actually had my hand raised in the audience the entire time and didn't get any recognition at all. And so I don't know where we go with this, but I think that. I think that Mr. Bauchman also needs to do better and, and we've been being thrown around like, the town council told us, we're making our case to the town manager when we asked them. The town manager told us, we're making our case to the town council. And so. Who, who's making the decisions here? And, and why aren't we all working together to figure out together how we can make this work since we all seem to agree that this is urgent and important, right? So why can't we work together? Why aren't you guys telling us what it is that you need from us so that we can make this happen? I'm just not understanding.
Thank you. Maybe I'll not respond immediately, but preserve comment, reserve response for a couple minutes so I can call in a couple of the members of the working group. Pat?
So I want to comment on the process tonight. You invited to come present our budget, that this was supposed to be a budget hearing. Our co-chairs presented. And you never, and I'm addressing to you, Andy, you never asked anyone, um, the school, the finance committee members or the school committee members and town council members to ask us question with the budget. On Monday, when we, when we presented, there were some questions that was supposed to be asked tonight and none of them were asked. I have children who studied finance, two of them. I have a kid that studied economics. I have a child that studied accountant. Two of my kids work at Wall Street. We have a finance director in this town. That is advising how to budget for Crest program. You all are very intelligent people. And you want to, you know, take what they recommended with the so-called management team. How on earth is four responders going to work? It's been set up for failure. If any of my kids perform like this, they will lose their job. If any BIPOC professional. Present this type of budget for a program that is clearly going to fail, they will lose, they will lose their job. But the finance director is a white man. His job is protected. In fact, what happens in this town is that we. Well, what happens in this town is that some of the people who perform very poorly get rewarded. The same person that performed in the school system. Was special education funding that was going into the special education attorneys. And it was being presented at school committees as if all the money was going to the students with special need when it wasn't. History is repeating itself. The person was being promoted. How much has he made in this town? Millions from taxpayers' money. And then we're here begging nickel and diamond to provide services. For BIPOC people, we all pay taxes in this town. We are part of this town. We should have the same right that you all enjoy. More than $100,000 is devoted to golf course for white people. We have $100,000 set aside for capital projects. Temporary $100,000 and none of you. And I'm trying to like control my emotion. None of you can bring that up. What I'm hearing is we want economic development director. We want this because you always, you guys always get what you want. You guys wasted my time for months. And to come to tonight and not even ask question, I have developed that budget. In my line of work, I have developed programs. I may have accent, I may not be as articulate as you guys are, but do not. Resume people the way you see them, get to know them. This is not hard. We can get this off ground. There is money to get this done. Stop canceling BIPOC people. Enough is enough. Enough is enough. You guys should be very lucky, okay, that some of us are risking everything to speak truth to power. I have to negotiate every single day before I leave my house. Because everywhere I go is white spaces. The only place that is not white space. Is my place of business in Hadley. It's a, it's a refuge for me and my home. My, my place of business is very inclusive. Anybody can ask my, my 20 staff that I, I employ. You guys have driven, drive me away in Amherst. I used to run a business in Amherst. It is not a welcoming community. I raised that awareness about what was happening in special education. I raised awareness about racism in, um, business community. Okay. We should, we should be better than this to have a white woman, and I'm not attacking Medibeth, she's a white social worker. She has experience in mental health, but she does not have, she does not live our experience. The management team should have done better. Reach out to other BIPOC social workers, BIPOC psychologists, BIPOC people who have worked in the field to help you guys include CSWG folks to come up with proposal. And you guys are accepting something that is down to fail. And our finance director is making a lot of money. And this is what we get mediocre service for BIPOC community. I have a lot to say and please do not rush us tonight to end this meeting. I don't care if it's still midnight. We don't get to have the platform. Please treat us with respect. I have more to say, but our yield, do not shut down this meeting until BIPOC people, CSW says we're ready to leave. We have to speak our mind tonight because we won't have that opportunity again. Enough is enough, please.
Ross?
Andy, I want to address this comment to you and to the finance committee first. I'm well aware that there is a law that says that the town council cannot increase any line item in the town manager's budget. But the law also provides for you to request a new revised proposal from the town manager. So do not hide behind some law that you can't do anything here. I'm asking that the finance committee request that the town council, ask the town manager for a revised proposal with fuller funding for the Crest program. And if the town manager is not willing to do that, it's, there is a mechanism whereby the town council can actually make a change. And there's probably another method by which you can make this happen. So don't hide behind the law. You can make this happen. Thank you.
Okay. The number is. Cause I think that we've heard. From, well, I don't know, Ms. Bowman. She mean.
Hi. Um, so to bounce off of what Mr. Vernon Jones said, not only. Um, can the town council make a recommendation, but from what I understand, town council has the ability to. Um. Not approve. Portions of. Particular monies that are going to certain places. So. You guys absolutely have the ability to make change. It's all about whether or not you want to. Um. I just, I, you know, and that's, and that's the first thing I wanted to say. The second thing I wanted to say is that, um. If you've seen me on any of these meetings with the CSWG, I usually don't last this long. I don't last this long because I literally. Have a house full of children right now that it is now nine fifty, nine twenty, thirty two. They have yet to sit down for dinner. I've been trying to make dinner in between, like every time I shut off the camera, I've been trying to make dinner in between. I'm here because this is important. This is important. And I personally am tired of not holding my. White counterparts. Um. Not holding them accountable for their lack of motivation, for their lack of support. Um. And I want to say something about that because there is one particular white person that I have, um. Thrown out props to whatever, given support to, told that, spoken about over and over again, and that is Mr. Vernon Jones. And I consider Mr. Vernon Jones a co-conspirator to the BIPOC community. I consider him a co-conspirator because he puts his effort, his time, his energy into making. Making things different. To holding his own community accountable. If you don't know the work that he's tried to do over and been doing over the years, like, I don't know if he remembers this, but he and I had a conversation, right? When he decided he was leaving, being principal over at Fort River School. And I was real mad. I was big mad. I was like, where are you going? And. He said, I need to work with other white people about issues regarding racism and, you know, we need to like, look at this and hold ourselves accountable for this. What we're doing, you know, as far as like how we're, we're interacting, how we're treating the BIPOC community. But, and I was like, at first I was like, huh? Because the first thing that came to my mind is a situation where it's like, oh, you're going to suck in a bunch of, you know, people of color to come in and help you feel better about, you know, not being racist. And he was like, no, 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 no. Where, I want to work with other white people and holding other white people accountable for their movement through this world and so on and so forth. And I was like, oh, okay. So when, when I was, had the honor to have him be part of this community of the CSWG, I was like, what? Okay, I can't wait to hear the words that are coming out of his mouth. And let me tell you, he has yet to disappoint. He has been on point. He has been about it. He has been, he has not backed off at one little piece. He was like, he is holding his community accountable. And you know what? If you need as white people in this community, as white people are part of the town, about part of town council and, you know, the finance committee and any other committee on town, you guys need to have a conversation with Mr. Vernon Jones because I'm telling you right now. He will give you a whole new perspective. There are very few people that are white that I call co-conspirators. He is one of them because he is looking at it critically. He is looking at himself critically. He is doing the work day to day. That's what it takes to be, to be a person who is actively trying to be non-racist and not be part of the systemic racism. They work day to day. Every day they're working with themselves, trying to be critical of how they move through the world. How are they interacting with people of color? Are they interacting with people of color? Cause that's the question that I have for me. How often do you interact with people of color? How often are you actually in their communities, working with them, but not working with them as like, I'm going to teach you something, working with them like, I'm gonna sit back and listen. I will never forget the one thing that my ex-husband was told when he walks into a room, you need to sit down and be quiet when you're in a room of people of color. You need to see and hear and feel what is going on. You walking into a room as a white person, when there is a group of people of color, if there's even one people, person of color, you need to take a moment and listen. And that is what I have found that this whole community, it's, has failed. You guys don't want to listen. You don't, you guys don't want to hear because as soon as you're uncomfortable, you want to fight us. You want to make us feel bad about what we're fighting for. We're fighting for a space to be human, to be, to feel normal, to feel like when you walk into places like, um. Hastings, when you walk into places, businesses like Thirty Boatwood, when you walk into these places and you don't look around and be like. Everybody's looking at me, they're wondering why I'm here. Like literally, that is what people of color feel walking into some of these businesses. Everybody turned and looked at me when I walked into the door. Even the family center, which is supposed to be a space for people of color. I mean, not for people of color, for people, like people in the community, a free space for people in the community to let their kids play together, so on and so forth. You know what? I stopped going there. I stopped going there with my last child. Reason why I stopped going there is because for a couple reasons. One, they moved it way out of like, a space that was, that was accessible. They moved it from the center of town. To North Amherst. No longer necessarily, you know, you know, a place where people could just go to. You know, like there's all these little changes that you don't think are big deals, but they're, they're constant microaggression. That's what, those are, those are, those are those microaggressions. Whenever we're questioned about a feeling that we have when it comes to, you know, I'm saying this and I'm saying how this is making me feel and you're questioning me because you're like, well, why would you feel that way? Or I think you're misinterpreting how, you know, how this happened. You're questioning me, you're making me second guess myself. You're telling me that my feelings aren't valid. Every single time you do something like that and those, those things build up, they build up to the point where it's like, then you, we're yelling at you, we're yelling at you, we're telling you that like, you know, why? Why? Like, and, and, and I, and I just want you to understand that, like, and I hope you do understand that, but I'm going to stop speaking. I actually am going to remove myself from the meeting because I really do have to feed my family and make sure my family is feeding. So, um, I thank you guys all for hearing me out tonight. Um, and I hope that you really start stepping up to the plate and really doing some honest, actual work to make a difference in this community. Because I've been here 30 years and, you know, it would be nice to actually see and be part of some of this change. So thank you very much and, um, I, you know, I appreciate you letting me talk. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to conclude just by saying one thing and that is that. I'm very sorry if. The choices made about process were not the correct choices, but they were made in good faith. And what we tried to do is to start with, by letting the first presentation, having the first presentation from the working group at our council meeting and then. Asking for the town manager to make a responding, a response to it and. Hear council questions and then come back. So the last, first word and the last word would be from the working group. And. You know, if that was a bad choice. You know, I'll take responsibility, but it wasn't the idea of starting giving the first and last piece to the working group and having the other piece in the middle was certainly made by all of us and at least in what we thought was a reasonable approach. was certainly made by all of us, and at least in what we thought was a reasonable approach. But given the time now, I do want to draw to a close and just see if some of the only ones are gonna recognize at this point, so I can draw to, can close, is one of the co-chairs of the working group, if there's any concluding comments that you want to make. Like, see if we can adjourn all groups. So Brianna or Alicia? You last.
Yes, thank you. So I'm, Brianna's gonna make our final closing comment, but I just wanted to say also that this is just, this is a very good example of the way that intention versus impact works and even further emphasizes the importance of our recommendations. The intention around the spaces that created in this town, and I apologize, but they do not matter. What matters is the real impact that they have. And so I really urge you to keep that in mind when you're moving forward, that your intentions do not matter. What matters is the real impact that they have on the community. And the community has spoken many times to let you know what the impact is. And now it is your responsibility to act, not to make excuses and not to continue to push us off and say, at another time, because there is no better time. This is overdue. And so now is the best time. And so I urge you all to keep those things in mind moving forward. And I wanted to end with that comment, but I, it's just really bothering me also that I wanted to bring up that, that at the beginning of this meeting, if the intention was just to give the, the town manager his time to the slideshow, then the APD and the fire chief did not need to be brought in, because they were not even presenting. So for their presence to be there and not ours is very highly problematic and is a demonstration of white supremacy. If there was going to be anybody else on the screen that was not presenting, it should have been our group. Thank you.
Thank you. Brianna, anything else, or before we adjourn, get all the groups to adjourn?
Yeah, Andy, I think just going forward, when the community safety working groups recommendations are spoken about, it would be helpful for members or people from leadership to be in the room just to emphasize Alicia's point. And I also just want to emphasize that integrity is when your intentions and actions meet each other consistently. So if your intention is to create a more equitable town, that's the time to act.
So, thank you. Do you want to adjourn first, or would you rather have me, have Linda adjourn the council first?
Whatever works better for you.
Why don't you go ahead and adjourn, and then I'll ask Linda adjourn the council, and I'll adjourn the finance committee.
Tashina's hand still up?
I'm sorry, I'm put down.
Okay.
Oh, thank you. Okay, I want to, I want to motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Thank you for having us, and hopefully in the future, we can be present at all conversations in regards to our recommendations.
Linda, adjourn the council?
Yes, there, the town council meeting on May 27th is adjourned. Thank you.
The finance committee is adjourned. Thank you. Good night all.
Thank you, everyone.